Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Newburyport zoning board of appeals for the meeting of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We're going to take a pause for a moment. This is Rob Champetti, the chairman. Before we start things off, just to allow folks to log in and get their full connection, in which case I'll step back in and introduce myself and the board and we'll get things going. We're just going to take a momentary pause for about a minute around seven oh one, seven oh two, we'll start things off so that everyone has time to log on. Okay, this is Rob Champetti again. Going to probably go a little bit quicker than that. It's seven oh one now, I see. Looks like we have a, we have a fairly stable list of attendees, so it looks like most folks that have logged on are established in their connection, so allow me to again say welcome. This is the Newburyport zoning board of appeals meeting for the evening of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, our published start time being seven P M. My name is Rob Champetti, I'm the chairman of the Z B A. And for those of you just logging on, we will begin this evening's meeting by following the meeting agenda that's published on the City of Newburyport's website. Under zoning board of appeals, you'll have a link to the agenda. Additionally, if you're not already otherwise familiar, there are hyperlinks embedded in the agenda as well as on the city's website that will take you to each and every hearing that is published on the agenda for this evening or any evening, and it'll allow you to quickly click into the subject matter and material and filings of the applicant plans, submissions and and such, so that you can, as a member of our community, listening in on the evening, on the meeting this evening, you can follow along easily. Though Andy Port, our planning director, will have up on the Zoom screen, he'll be sharing his screen, so don't worry about fiddling through links and attachments, you can simply look at the Zoom screen and you will see exactly what's being referred to, because our moderator, Mr. Port, will have that up for you. So allow me to start by introducing the board, we are then going to call our role and establish a quorum. I will then take a brief moment to walk everyone through, for those that perhaps may not have logged on to a virtual Zoom meeting for the Z B A or any public hearing before, I'll walk through the process of how the zoning board of appeals conducts its business. We will go through the sort of a quick outline of the process, and then we will get into, in the case of our meeting agenda, the request for extension, which is, which is on our agenda first. And then we'll get into the public hearings, and we'll follow the sequence of the public hearings that are listed on the agenda. Finally, at the end of this evening, we'll get into number four on our agenda, which is the business meeting approval of the minutes and any subsequent conversations or correspondence that the, that the board has to undertake. We try to put that at the end of the evening so that folks waiting patiently don't have to wait through that to be able to address the matter for which they are attending, either in application or as a, as in a butter or member of the public that wishes to speak. So, without further ado, I'm going to take a moment and introduce the board. This evening, we have Mr. Mark Moore, our vice chairman, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, Mr. Ken Swanton, our member, Mr. Walter Shannon, also a member, and Mr. Gregory Bennet, associate member, and again, my name is Rob Champetti, I'm the chairman. Additionally, you'll see us among the panelists this evening, Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, and Mr. Andy Port, our planning director, and finally, Ms. Gretchen Joy, our keeper of the minutes. Ms. Joy's unenviable task is to write down and copy down everything we all say, so when we get to the portion of the evening when, when we open it up to comments from the, you know, public comments, we do ask that you kindly just introduce yourself by name and give your address so that Ms. Joy can, can record that in the minutes. So, without, with, without any further delay, I'll move right into our roll call, we'll establish that we have a quorum. And then we can get into the rest of the, the evening, and I'll start by just outlining the process and the flow for the evening. So, without going into our roll call, I'll call the roll and I'll just ask members of the Z B A to respond if you are in attendance by saying either present or here. Mr. Mark Moore?
Here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle?
Here.
Mr. Swant, Ken Swanton?
Here.
Mr. Walter Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennet?
Yes, present.
And Rob Champetti, I'm present, that is six members of the Z B A present. We, we will have the five voting members this evening, and I'll just go over that quickly, and this is more of a legal criteria. We have to have at least five voting members on every application, and in order to be successful in, by any applicant, you have to have at least four members vote in the affirmative, so four is the minimum number. Five will be listed as voting members, and just to go through the agenda very quickly, the five voting members on twenty-seven Hancock Street, as well as twenty-one, twenty-five Hancock Street for this evening will be Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Stephen Delisle, Mr. Ken Swanton, Mr. Walter Shannon, and Mr. Gregory Bennet. I unfortunately was unable to qualify myself for this evening, having been absent the last hearing, so for this, for this evening, our vice chair, Mr. Moore, will, will chair the applications for Hancock Street. I intend to qualify myself in time for the next meeting and any subsequent applications, and my apologies, I was traveling and had some delays in just getting able to do that. Moving to one ninety-five High Street, we have Mr. Stephen Delisle, we are accusing himself on that application, so the voting members will be myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, and again, Mr. Bennet will be the five voting members on one ninety-five High Street. Having gone over that and established that we indeed do have a quorum and our roll call complete, I will just take a quick moment to, to walk through how the flow will happen this evening, and then we'll jump right into our first matter, which is a request for an extension on Seven Plant Street. So, for members that, for members of the audience that may have not been in attendance before, when we go through the administrative flow of the zoning board of appeals, we operate by Robert's rules of order, which just simply means that we start, we start at the beginning, and at every application, I'll read the legal introduction to the application. The application addressed the applicant by name or their representative, as well as our docket number and the relief being sought, whether it's a special permit, special permit for nonconformities, variance, etc. Pardon me, and a brief description of what is being applied for. At, as soon as I read that into the record, we will then open it up to the applicant or the applicant's representative to present the application. The applicant will present the application to the board members, and once finished, we will then close that portion of the public hearing, and we go to the public comment section. During the public comment section, Mr. Port, our planning director, will put up on the screen just the sort of the rules of the road, it's a quick slide that defines, you know, how we ask that everyone who wishes to speak kindly govern themselves. We do ask the courtesy of everyone to please keep your comments to within two minutes, just in the interest of timing, as well as in the interest of others that may wish to speak. We do ask again that you, for Ms. Gretchen Joy's benefit, just give your name and address for the record, and then feel free to speak your mind. You do not need to pick a side, whether you are speaking in support or opposition. Feel free to let us know that, but you're not obligated to let us know that at all, you may simply just speak your mind and share your thoughts. Once we've gone through the, the public comment section, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we then go to questions from the board. Questions from the board section is when members of the Z B A, one at a time, will take an opportunity to ask questions that may exist either in their minds, having heard the application, as well as comments from the public, they may adapt and adopt questions that they may have heard from members of the public, so members of the, of the public who have spoken, rest assured that your being, your questions are being certainly listened to very carefully, and you may hear some version of that question presented to the applicant or the applicant's representatives in some form or another, and that's, that's sort of how it meets its way through. Once the questions from the members of the Z B A are completely closed, that portion of the public hearing, and we go into deliberations. Deliberations is this section of our hearing, when you essentially get to listen to the members of the Z B A think out loud, and their, their charge, our, our responsibility is to work through the legal criteria of the application and the relief being sought to, to, to just sort of, you know, toil over and, and question and deal with and discuss whether the, you know, whether there are additional questions, or just deal with the legal criteria and what's been presented, and it's how the board deliberates on whether the applicant has met their burden, whether, you know, there are further questions, and at the, at the end of deliberations, once every member of the Z B A has sort of spoken and posed additional questions, we will then, I will then close that portion of the public hearing, at which point we will go into the vote section, and under Robert's rules of order, you'll hear a motion made in the affirmative, which merely means that the, the format of the motion is in the form of a motion, a member of the Z B A making a motion to approve. That doesn't necessarily mean that that, that that member of the Z B A plans to support the application or plans to vote that way, just merely is the format by which it's, the, the application is advanced to a vote. A motion is made to approve the application, at which point another member of the Z B A must second the motion. Once the motion's made and seconded, I will then call the roll and we'll go through, and the members of the Z B A who are voting will vote either yes or no. And again, a four vote yes is required in order for the application to succeed and pass. So with that, we will, then, we will now get into the, the beginning of the, the hearing this evening, and we'll start with a request for extension on Seven Plant Street. On Seven Plant Street, I understand we have Mr. Tim O'Day, who wishes to speak in support of it, we'll, we can now hear from Mr. O'Day, and Mr. O'Day, you, you have the floor, and you can go ahead and unmute Mr. O'Day's mic.
Thank you. Good night, good evening, everybody. Yeah, we're here just to renew our in-law permit that was granted in June, two thousand and eighteen. We haven't made any structural changes since the permit was granted, the only change is that is now my mother-in-law, who's the occupant, so it is a true request for an in-law permit.
Renewal.
I can answer any questions, is there anything else you'd like to know? That's all I have prepared.
Very good. All right, well, thank you, Mr. O'Day, and with that, we have members of the Z B, I'll go through members of the Z B A, do we have any, any thoughts, comments with respect to the request for an extension on the in-law apartment for Seven Plant Street, Mr. Moore?
I, I don't have any, I mean, given that the, the office has informed us that the in-law apartment exists within the footprint, the square footage is within regulations, it's going to be a true in-law apartment, as we just heard, and there's still sufficient onsite parking, I don't see any reason not to approve.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would concur with Mr. Moore, it seems like everything is in order, it's in existence, it's been in existence for three years. The in-laws have been living there, so I think that this is, seems appropriate for approval.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I think my colleagues said it well, I concur with their opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon.
I also agree.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon and Mr. Bennet.
Yes, I agree with the comments of my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, I, I will chime in, and I agree with my colleagues as well, it seems perfectly appropriate, and certainly I can support it. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the applicant's request to extend their in-law, their in-law special permit on Seven Plant Street?
This is Mr. Moore here, I'll make a motion to approve the request to extend the in-law special permit for Seven Plant Street for three additional years. That's application twenty eighteen dash seventeen.
Second, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore's motion, seconded by Mr. Delisle, calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's six in the affirmative, it only requires four to carry, the application for request for an extension is, has been successful, so that, that motion is approved, and congratulations, and good luck to you on the in-law apartment, and thanks very much.
I thank you for your time, all.
Very good. All right, so now moving into the public, the public hearings, the first matter on our agenda is the continuation from the hearing of three nine, two thousand and twenty-one, I was absent at that hearing, and it was chaired by Mr. Moore, who will take over and continue to chair this, both twenty-seven Hancock Street, as well as twenty-one, twenty-five Hancock Street, and with that, I will turn over the imaginary gavel to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. So our first public hearing is Caswell Development on both of these twenty-seven Hancock Street and twenty-one, twenty-five Hancock Street. The applicant has asked the board to look at these together, as it is, they are connected lots or side-by-side lots, and both of these applications were continued from, most recently, from a March ninth meeting. Before us tonight, the applicant is requesting a continuance to May eleventh on twenty-seven Hancock Street, twenty-one, twenty-two, the special permit for nonconformities. But for both twenty-seven Hancock Street and twenty-one, twenty-five Hancock Street, they do request the board to consider to allow two-family home or use one oh two on both applications. There have been a few developments is, with respect to D C O D since last we met, and also with respect to a possible utilization of a section, a six C special permit. That's also being considered, but for tonight, before us, as, as a Z B A, the applicant will be speaking to allow two-family use for twenty-seven Hancock Street, twenty-one, twenty-five Hancock Street, and seeking a continuance for the special permit for nonconformities on just twenty-seven Hancock. So, with that said, might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Adam Costa, I'm, I'm not Lisa Mead, as you can tell. Lisa is my partner, Lisa had an unavoidable conflict tonight, so she sends her regards, but you've got me back-to-back-to-back tonight, so, so bear with me if you, if you would. The first of these, these three applications, two of which we're, we're hoping to proceed with, and as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, one of which we're, we're asking for a continuance on for twenty-one through twenty-five and twenty-seven Hancock. With me tonight, albeit virtually, is Jay Caswell, principal of Caswell Development, and the applicant for these two properties, and also with us, or soon to be with us, I think she was having some technical difficulties, but the project architect, Aline Graff, is joining us or will be joining us tonight as well, if the board has questions for her. So, as you can see, we've got a brief PowerPoint or PDF presentation that I'd like to work through, I I won't belabor many of these points, because I know that this is the, I think, third appearance, third session of the public hearing before you, and so you've had an opportunity to hear much of the presentation already provided by attorney Mead. So if we can proceed to the, to the second slide, Mr. Port, I would appreciate it. So, we'll begin with the updates, we were last before you, and I'm getting this secondhand through attorney Mead, so you know it better than I do, but we were last before you on March ninth, and discussed a few updates that had been made at that time to the proposal for these two properties. We also explained to the board at that meeting, as we had at the first, that we would be seeking a court and lane special permit from the planning board, which we expected was going to be, and has since been heard on April seventh. And the sense we had gotten, again conveyed to me through attorney Mead from the board members, is that the board, your board, was generally supportive of the two-family use on these properties. I'll address in a moment the, the nonconformities issue, but generally supportive of the two-family use, but that you had questions about whether the planning board would be supportive of it as well, and that you asked us to proceed before the planning board to get a sense of that board before we attempted to wrap up the process, the, the public hearing process before your board. So, as I said, we did appear at the April seventh meeting, it was indicated at that meeting, and certainly, Mr. Port, I can confirm for you, but I, I did read it as well in the staff memorandum that issued earlier today. But it was indicated by planning board members at that meeting that they anticipated approval of the applications upon the applicant addressing a few remaining comments from, from city staff, and from the peer review engineer on the project. So we got that general thumbs up from the planning board, which again, I think is what the board had wanted us, your board, had wanted us to do before we reappeared before you on this application. So, what we are hoping to do, as I alluded to, and as you said, Mr. Chairman, tonight, is to get action by the board on the two special permits for two-family use, with an understanding that we would be back before you at a later date on the third application we submitted for the special permit for nonconformities at the twenty-seven Hancock Street property, and that's because we've decided through discussions that have been had, and the applicability of the D C O D to that property, and its pre-existing, non-conforming nature, we've decided that we'll need to make certain modifications to the proposal that's been presented. So we'd like to get a general approval of the two-family use, so we can feel comfortable moving forward and expending those additional funds and resources in redesigning the twenty-seven Hancock Street site, with an understanding that we would come back to you for that special permit, given that there's a, there's a different standard of review, as you know, looking at modifications to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure than there would be when you're evaluating the, the question of the use of the property. If we could proceed to the next slide. So, again, these are sort of repeat updates, because this is nothing new from the last session of your public hearing, but the twenty-one through twenty-five Hancock Street property, that's the property on the left, as you, as you stand on Hancock Street, will be fully compliant with dimensional requirements upon approval of the court. The only nonconformity of the twenty-seven Hancock Street property would be a five-point-seven-foot setback that's a pre-existing setback off of that court, which will be improved, in fact, to eleven-point-seven feet, at least as it stands in terms of the, the current proposal that we've got. Again, we'll, we'll make some changes to that, and that'll be back before you at a at a future, a future public hearing session. So this is a plan that you've seen before, no substantial changes have been made to it, I know it's hard to see on the, on the screen. Oh, thank you, Mr. Port, appreciate that. So you can see here, the proposed two-story wood frame, two-family structure on the twenty-one to twenty-five Hancock Street property, that's again, the property on the left. We had made the modification at an earlier, in between, I think, the first and second sessions of public hearing by detaching the garage at the, at the rear, along the side of that property, which you can see as well. Obviously, removed from that site will be the industrial building that exists today. Additionally, on the, on the twenty-seven Hancock Street property on the right, you can see that we had a proposal for similarly, a proposed two-story wood frame, two-family structure. You can see, if you look closely, you'd be existing structure that's sort of shaded beneath a portion of the proposed new structure, that's the pre-existing, non-conforming structure on the site today. But as I alluded to earlier, we intend to make some changes in light of the D C O D applicability to that particular property at a future, at a future time, in advance of a future continued public hearing on the question of the special permit for nonconformities with regard to that structure at, at twenty-seven Hancock Street. The, the next slide, which is a plan that's of some importance, I know, because I, I'm fairly certain that my, my partner, attorney Mead, had mentioned at maybe the first and maybe even the second session of your public hearing, that there is a buy-right option for this site. And, or I should say substantially buy-right, it's, it's buy-right with respect to the twenty-one through twenty-five Hancock Street property. It would still require the special permit for nonconformities with regard to the twenty-seven Hancock Street site, obviously, because you've got an existing, non-conforming structure. But we could propose two single-family homes, one on each of these properties, as a buy-right option. One of the things that this two-family alternative gives us the ability to do is what was described to your board in great detail at the last session of the public hearing, which is to incorporate a substantial amount of landscaping, not just on the site, but along the rail trail that you see on the left side of the plan that is presently on your screen. So there's a significant amount of landscaping that has been done, as you can see. This is a comprehensive plan that identifies not only certain existing vegetation, but mostly proposed new vegetation, and identifies it by, by type or species. My client has, prior to the last meeting, my client had the opportunity to meet with the chair of the Parks Commission, the manager of the city parks, the project manager of the rail trail, and the head of the tree commission, and was able to get their respective feedback on what they wanted to see along that border, along that boundary between the rail trail and the twenty-one through twenty-five Hancock Street property, and has proposed a comprehensive planting plan, and I might say so, a fairly costly planting plan, but again, something that, that my clients committed to do as part of this proposal for the two-family use of, of these properties. So there's also, there was also some discussion with the immediately adjacent butter on the opposite side of the twenty-seven Hancock Street property about screening in that location as well, and that screening is shown here on the landscape plan also. I'd be remiss if I didn't remind the board, and again, I apologize if I'm being repetitive, because I know some of this may have been said at earlier sessions of the public hearing, but you can see here, it's even denoted at the bottom of the plan, that the existing curb is to be reset, the existing granite curb, and while there might be a requirement, typically even if this were single-family use, to replace the sidewalks with concrete, again, Mr. Caswell is part of this proposal for, for two-family uses, has proposed a brick sidewalk along the length of the property, so that's something that is being proposed as well. The next few slides, the next four slides, and I'll allow Mr. Port to sort of work through them one at a time. These are what you've seen already, and I, I ask you to, to view them really with a focus on the rail trail, which you can see, and the structure immediately adjacent, or structures immediately adjacent to the rail trail. You can see in the background, the twenty-seven Hancock Street structure. As I alluded to before, several times now, we are going to be back before your board with modifications to that structure that's in the, the background here. So you can, to some extent, disregard that, that perspective, or that rent portion of the rendering, because we will be back before you for that. But the real objective of these plans, which were prepared a couple of months ago, was to give you a sense of what you'd be looking at from the rail trail. You know, how, what, what perspective you would have on the freestanding garage and the proposed two-family structure adjacent to it. I know that there was some discussion about the size of these structures, and there's a reference to that, too, in the staff memorandum, which I'll address in a moment. But, you know, I, I would highlight for the board, and I, I didn't make mention of it when we were on the site plan, but if you, if you do look back in your own notes at the site plan and the zoning matrix that's included, you'll see that these are sizable properties, and, and we had also produced for your board back just prior to your March ninth meeting, we had produced a chart that was an attempt based upon, you know, what limited information we had immediate access to, to sort of compare footprint size of existing structures to lot size, just in an effort to show you that this proposal is not quite of character or inconsistent with the neighborhood generally. So, with that, in having shown you these renderings, I'll, I'll move on, and I'm going to sort of cross-reference. If Mr. Port will allow me to do so, I'm going to cross-reference his, his staff memorandum, or the staff memorandum that was prepared by, by Ms. Sullivan. That staff memorandum addressed proposed findings with respect to the special permit criteria for two-family use, and what you see here on your screen, as part of the PowerPoint or PDF presentation, this is taken from our memorandum to the board, when we made our original submittal to your board back in January. But I, there's a, certainly a consistency or a parallel between what you see here and what you see in, in the staff memorandum. So, the, the, the test for special permit uses is a nine-part test in your zoning ordinance, and we've addressed each of the nine parts sequentially here on your screen, you see one through three. So the first requirement is that the use that's requested is listed in the table of use regulations or elsewhere as requiring a special permit, and indeed, this use, two-family use is allowed by special permit in the district, our two zoning district. Number two, second requirement is that the requested use be essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. We believe that it is, that greater density is acceptable on the lot, given the sufficient lot area and the frontage, and the ability to design it with the court and lane approval from, or forthcoming approval from the, the planning board. And again, that's consistent with the proposed finding in the staff memorandum. Number three, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We believe that that requirement is satisfied as well, we're showing one driveway provided directly off of Hancock Street, with the other off of the proposed court, which is existing to some extent, but not, not formalized, I know there was some discussion earlier about, at the prior meeting, about the status of, of love it or leave it court. I'm not sure that the status really matters, because of the court and lane process that exists, and the ability of the planning board to approve it, whether it exists previously or not, but obviously, the, the other access will be off of that court. Old street trees, which currently, my understanding, based on some feedback from neighbors, and from my client, is that they caused the sidewalk to heave, they're going to be removed, and a new brick sidewalk will be installed. Some of those trees will be replaced, there is insufficient room to do so within the, the street right-of-way, which might typically be an excuse for not, not replacing them in usual circumstances elsewhere in the city, but in this case, there's the ability to do that on, on the private property. And of course, the the brick sidewalk will be installed in lieu of a concrete sidewalk. And the rail trail connection adjacent to the property, we believe that the impact will be negligible based upon the substantial screening that we have negotiated with those various city officials whom I referenced previously. Okay, so continuing on, criterion four, the requested use will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. You can see here that the 27 Hancock Street proposal is estimated to add approximately 550 gallons per day to the water and sewer system. And the 21 through 25 Hancock Street proposal will have an estimated 880 gallons per day of water to the system. Those numbers in a vacuum might seem substantial, but not in light of the the 2 million gallons per day that are treated by the city for both water and sewer. So we believe that these are, the term we use here is negligible, but they're they're minimal impacts and sort of expected impacts for this sort of a residential development, which is something that, you know, is an overall improvement to the current condition of the site. Five is an easy one. It simply requires that the applicant comply with any special regulations for the use, and there are none for two-family use in this district. Number six, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts nor be detrimental to the health or welfare. As we've explained here, we think that this is generally consistent with the mix of single and two-family homes that exist in the neighborhood. We also note that there's a multi-family structure nearby on the corner of Madison and Hancock. There are five other two-family homes in the street. And these lots that are now before you are the largest of the lots, will be the largest lots with two-family structures in the neighborhood. And again, they will meet dimensional dimensional requirements with the exception of the the existing setback, front yard setback for the non-conforming structure. And the proposal will eliminate commercial traffic that would be generated, would be generated from the existing industrial use of the 21 through 25 Hancock Street site. Okay, seven, eight, and nine. So criterion seven requires that the requested use not, by addition to the neighborhood, causing excess of that particular use in the neighborhood. And again, we've cited to the varied housing types, the variety that exists in the neighborhood today. We think that this is consistent, that variety. In that same vein, the proposed use must be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. I think that a statement I often see in in some of these staff reports, I don't know if it's made here in connection with this application, is that, you know, by virtue of it being an allowed special permit use, there's at least a recognition by the city council as the chief legislative body that this sort of use is something that can generally be permissible in the district if appropriate mitigation is provided and concerns are addressed. And we think we've done that. So we think that that's that that criterion is satisfied. And of course, the removal of a a non-conforming use from the neighborhood is an added advantage as well. And then finally, criterion nine, the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner as to emit any dangerous, noxious, injurious, or otherwise objectionable fire explosion or or other other sort of nuisance. And in this case, none of, none of the above are are anticipated to 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 be associated with this particular application. So that's the, that's the conclusion. We have a few additional slides you can see on your screen. These were simply included in the presentation in the event that the board wants to reference them in connection with questions you may have, whether they be of me or of the project architect or of the of the applicant or component. But they're, they're just the architectural elevation plans that you've seen before. Again, with regard to the 27 Hancock Street site, they're not entirely relevant any longer. And we are seeking a a continuance of that special permit for the nonconformity, but it does give you a sense of the of the two-family use. The last point I'd like to make, and then I'll, I'll, I'll stop talking and let the, let the board ask questions it might have, but a comment that I heard you, Mr. Chairman, make at the at the outset, and it's also referenced in the staff memorandum, is this concept of a of a 60 special permit from the planning board that would allow a couple of smaller structures to be placed on each of these two lots, so a total of four structures in lieu of two structures, but four structures, each of which would be smaller. That is not something that the applicant is taken off the table by any means. It's something that is still under consideration. But I also understand that there's that that section 60 of your ordinance is is somewhat in flux, that there, I think, has been noticed and published, and maybe even underway, a public hearing now in committee on the potential changes to that section. And from my client's perspective, from the applicant's perspective, it simply doesn't wish to be held up as it continues to explore the the future development of the site, but does recognize that that interest has been expressed by your board. And we don't quite know, my understanding from attorney need is that there was some sort of marginal or tangential reference to 60 when the applicant was before the planning board. And I don't want to speak for the board, the the planning board, but maybe that board wasn't, you know, quite as receptive. But again, we're happy to continue that conversation. We have to go back before the board to continue our public hearing. And obviously, if anything were to change in connection with the design on these two sites, then we would have to come back to your board to get that approved, and we would certainly, we would certainly do that. But what we're hoping for tonight, what we're asking for tonight is approval with respect to each of these two properties of the two-family use. So then we can invest the additional resources, time, and effort, and so forth, and money in continuing our our permitting process for the property. And as promised with that, I'm gonna turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, happy to answer any questions or have my my client or or Ms. Draft do that, if your questions are more appropriately directed to them.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mr. Costa. And I would, I would agree, at least with respect to 60 on your your summary of of where that stands so far, a little bit in flux, but something that's been in discussion, but that may come up in in questions later on. Before we move to questions from the board, we move to public comments. As many, many of you will recall, and probably have done way too many Zoom meetings by now, but if you haven't used that raise hand icon to be recognized, make sure you're unmuted and wait and wait till your, through Mr. Port called your name. And then before you speak, unmute, and then when you start to speak, make sure you, again, mention name and address for the record. So at this point, we'll be looking for any comments from the public.
First person we have is Mary Ann McCauley. And Mary Ann, you'll have to unmute on your end as well.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann McCauley. I live at 25 Madison Street, right around the corner from this proposed project. I have a couple of concerns. One, the environmental impact of this construction. I'm assuming these are gonna be fairly large luxury homes. And I am concerned about the long-term impact on our environment, particularly at a time when the this community is facing some major environmental challenges. I have a question after listening to the gentleman speak. Who is going to determine the impact on our current city services? So who determines if the additional water usage can be accommodated by our current water sewer system? And I'm also concerned about the project, does it match the the city's current need for affordable housing? You know, are these homes going? Will regular people be able to afford to live in these homes? We're having significant development in large luxury homes, and it's forcing those adult children, people who grew up in Newburyport, can no longer afford to live here. People who are nursing assistants, teaching assistants, grocery store workers can no longer afford to live here. So I'm concerned about affordability. And finally, I I understand that the current proposal represents a transition from commercial to residential use. I believe that it was recently occupied by an electric company. Neighbors and friends who are long-term Newburyporters, who've lived there here all their lives, have advised me that it was once Booton's Bus Depot, where vehicles were not only housed, but serviced. And I therefore hope that the board would require soil testing by an independent company to assess for potential environmental and health threats. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. Very good issues brought up. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the proposal or the applications?
Next person we have is Lindsay Doogie Donegan.
Hi, good evening, Board. This is Lindsay Donegan at 29 Hancock. We're Director of Butters. I guess my one question is, again, we want to thank you, everyone, for putting in the landscaping ideas that we had suggested. One comment, since you brought up the brick sidewalk and the removal of trees, can you explain at what part of the project that would take place? Is it gonna be at the beginning, middle, or end of the project?
At this point, I think we'll make sure to ask that question, so you'll have that answer. But we're just looking for public comment at this time, and that's a legitimate question, and that will definitely come up.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that had a comment?
Next person we have is Chris. And if you, Chris, if you could identify yourself by last name as well for the note taker.
It's Chris Zibert with Julie Shackleton. We live at 60 Purchase Street. I guess I I was at the other, the other board meeting regarding this project as well, and that's sort of what my comments are. And I'm not, I'm not quite sure if they they presented their drainage plans here. I'd just like to reiterate to the to the group, you know, the plans are great. And everything they addressed, the excess drainage would be directed towards the rail trail where the city system would take it into place. I'd just like to reiterate my concerns, as that is my parking lot yard area and our stone wall structure that's already there, that supports the parking lot for us and the church, has already collapsed with the construction of the rail trail. So, you know, just directing the extra water there, I just have more concerns. Overall, I think the plan's pretty great. I would love to see that building go away. Just a concern I still have, if they have any comments, you know, I'd be willing to talk to them or anything like that. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zibert. Appreciate that. Has anyone else have a comment?
Next person we have is Kim Quink.
Good evening. My name is Rob Jorgensen, and I'm Kim Quink's partner. We live at 70 Purchase Street. I would like to make sure that the a Butters letter that was submitted to City Hall, March 23. It's not, it, this letter is actually posted on the planning board's website, the document page, and the comments, including Chris, who just spoke, and also Mary Ann's comment about the concerns for what is, what is, what has occurred on the side of the bus garage in the past and soil testing, the risk of possible public exposure even. So stormwater drainage, the bus garage demolition, construction materials themselves being toxic during use and cutting, for instance, just down the street across from the rail trail. Granite cutting has been going on all week, open air dry sawing of granite. The exposure is, silica exposure concerns are so rampant now. And I learned from a landscaper recently that there's actually an ordinance or something to that effect, that one is actually supposed to be using wet sand. So construction exposure, but linking back to this letter, I'm hoping that a Butters such as ourselves, when we submit a letter, I'm hoping that they are actually read by the appropriate parties. And because we have no feedback, whether they have been read or not. Then I'm I'm hoping for a spirit of outreach to the Butters rather than sort of wondering like, what's, what's really going on? I think that's, that's essentially it. Again, this, this letter is actually titled on the city website, simply comments from a Butters 32321. And a lot of effort went into this, and all the Butters on Purchase Street approved of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jorgensen. Anyone else like to comment?
Not seeing any others at this time, Chair.
Okay, we will close that portion of the hearing and move on to questions from the board. We'll start out with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Appreciate it. So I'm wondering the, just, I have a number of questions based on the the comments from from the the various people who spoke during the public comment. But one thing that struck me is the the letter that that Mr. Jorgensen referred to, the the March 23 letter. I don't know if that's on our ZBA list of documents relevant to this matter. So I haven't seen that letter. I haven't read that letter. It might be helpful to see that letter and read that letter, but it was not in the materials for us for this evening. So that's, that's my first point. Second point, I will address to Mr. Costa and Mr. Caswell. Just, could you mention or just speak to the the concerns that a couple of these Butters had with respect to soil contaminants and and toxic materials on the site? I don't know that that's really our purview here at this board. That may be more for the planning board. But if we could just, you know, give a brief response to that question.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to do that through you.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So to Mr. Delisle's question, to the questions asked by one of the residents who spoke relative to the potential for environmental contaminants, I'd echo what, first and foremost, what Mr. Delisle alluded to. And I I always hesitate to tell boards that I appear before, when I represent private applicants, what what is and is not within their purview. At the same time, I most often am representing boards, and I don't shy away from that when I'm representing the board, and a question gets asked by an applicant or in a butter, and the response or or the analysis is not something that is within the scope of that board's review. So I I want to remind your board preliminarily that we are before the planning board as well. In fact, as as I heard some of these Butters comments, I pulled out the package of information I have here equally as large as what we've submitted to the zoning board. And I can see that we addressed some of these issues already, at least in writing. I suspect we may be asked to address them further with the planning board. We talked about, for example, the overloading of public services, whether that's something that would occur or would not. We talked about drainage. And we talked about, you know, the 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 status of the site. So I can tell you that it's more of a planning board issue than it is a zoning board issue. With that said, we don't shy away from giving an answer to the question. My client has informed me that there has been a 21E that was done on the property prior to his acquisition of the property, and that came back clean. So we have a clean 21E, 21E for for those in attendance who don't know, is a chapter of the Massachusetts General Laws that provides a process for remediation, for for analysis and eventual remediation of of properties that have potentially hazardous materials. And there's a multi-step process dictated by that statute and accompanying regulations for ensuring that a site is a quote-unquote "clean" site, free of hazardous materials. And so to have a clean 21E means that you've had a 21E assessment done on the site, and it's been confirmed that there are no environmental contaminants that would pose a potential public safety hazard, or, you know, very importantly, in a context like this, where the the use or reuse of the site is for residential purposes, you know, that wouldn't be permitted. And moreover, I'll just add this to the mix as well. For any of you who have familiarity with the construction industry, it would be virtually impossible to get a construction loan through any sort of institutional lender without producing a clean 21E, because the 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 bank doesn't want that sort of exposure either. And the 21E has been submitted to the And the 21E has been submitted to the construction lender for this project. So that's, that's where things stand from an environmental perspective.
Thank you. That's helpful. I don't have any further questions at this time, Mr. Chair, but I'll reserve my right to come back if I, if I think of anything else.
Mr. Chair, this is Andy Port. Could I just address one issue?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. The, and I appreciate the member of the audience, Mr. Jorgensen, I think it was, noting the letter. I did look as the board was listening to further comments just then or discussing further for the letter. I did see it posted to the planning board's page and inadvertent, I guess, only there. So we'll have it posted to the ZBA page as well, considering that it does look like there'd be, I assume, a continuance of this matter for the board to look at those comments. It does look like that letter was addressed to both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. So we'll, we'll make sure you have a copy of that to see the points that are raised in there as well. And I'm happy to pull that up now if anybody's interested.
Thank you, Andy. And Andy, if you had any further comment, just with respect to the purview of, you know, the planning board with respect to the drainage that always comes before.
Yeah, I think.
Environmental issues, things of that nature that, that we, you deal with, that we don't necessarily deal with.
Sure. Yeah. So with the, we would not typically be directly handling some, and we had not yet seen any information on what we call 21E or, or AWELs, you know, contaminants on the site, activities and use limitations, things like that. But there are, as the attorney mentioned, there are state requirements for that and licensed site professionals that would need to oversee any such work if those conditions exist on a property. But the, the other aspect of it, the stormwater side of it is, is definitely handled by the planning board, in particular by a peer review that's done by their consulting engineer. And so that is a typical review process for the Levitt Court roadway project, which incorporates the stormwater management for the properties as a whole. So one of the things our engineer looks for is to make sure that there aren't any increases in flows across property lines or things like that, that everything is essentially handled within the property boundary. But that's a generic summary of, of one of the issues that the planning board looks at as part of their permitting of this project.
Could you address wastewater as well?
Yeah, sorry. The, so for the capacity of wastewater and water, those are determined by the Department of Public Services. To my knowledge and understanding, there is not a capacity issue. Certainly, it's worthwhile discussion for us to revisit for the city going forward, and it's one I actually am trying to do with the Public Service Department right now. But as I understand it, for this area, there's the lines coming into this area, and the city as a whole, there is not a capacity limit that would mean that this project is putting anything overloaded. So, so it's my understanding, I can't speak for that department, but we know that from their comments previously on projects like this, on this one, that there isn't any concern of that nature raised.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks very much, Andy.
Mr. Moore, this is, this is Mr. Delisle once again. Can I just, just chime in quickly with another, just a clarification? So I, I'm sorry, is there a 21E that has been done with respect to this site or, or not? I, I, I thought I had heard Mr. Costa say that there was. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. And my, my client is present tonight as well, so he can chime in if I'm incorrect. But my understanding is that, yes, there is a clear 21E, 21E has been submitted to and approved by the bank. And as a precedent to that 21E, there were actually a series of, I believe, four test pits that were done, dug on the property.
Oh, I see. So it, but it hasn't been submitted to the, to the, the various cities.
If, excuse me, hey, Caswell, Caswell Development, I'll take this if you want.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Caswell.
So that would, that had a 21E done 1988 when they had, when the previous owner bought it. So what they did, they drove four monitoring wells in the site. I don't want to get too deep into it. So back since when the other buyer bought it, they were like, they got a 21E done when, and it was actually, it was, it was a pretty in-depth one. They drove four bunks, and then they tested all the, tested all the groundwater and everything else. Groundwater is at 12 to 14 feet. So it's very deep. The, they did soil testing, contaminants, no contaminants came back. And the use of it beyond that was of a, the guy was an electrician, so there was no storage and like fuel tanks, air fuel tank. There was a fuel tank that was removed prior, and that's why they had to do the test. Since there's no change of use, it comes back clean on the environmental studies, so there's no contaminants on site. So as far as that goes, there's, it's a clean site. That's when, I wouldn't be able to get financing on it. I don't, you know, I wouldn't, it wouldn't have got to this point had it come back tagged. I don't know if that helps or not. You know what I mean?
No, I think that helps. That clarifies the matter. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Moving on with questions from the board, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I mean, first, I just want to say to the Butters, it's got to be frustrating, you know, you get all your questions, you come to a meeting, you ask a bunch of questions. And, you know, I used to be on a planning board in another community before I moved to Newburyport, and your questions are pretty much mostly in their bailiwick, not ours. What we're dealing with tonight is, can you convert the use here to two family houses? And also another related issue, because one of these houses, the little house that's currently at 27, is going to be incorporated into one of these big two-family houses. So, but it's too close to the proposed street. So, you know, they need to come to us for that. So that's kind of where we're focused. And it's, it's a shame that we can't, even though we just did talk about 21Es and things, it's really not our bailiwick. So if we don't seem to be picking up on your questions from the audience, that's why, as, you know, as much. But I think the planning board certainly will, you know, want to air those things out. I do have a couple of questions. Speaking of the planning board, the last time you guys were here, we said, okay, you're asking to put these two buildings, as shown in this picture that's on the wall here, on this Levitt Court. And yet Levitt Court is, I guess, somebody called it a paper street. I, I look at the town zoning map, and it doesn't appear on the town zoning map. So I guess it's not an official street yet. So I, I'm, I'm nervous about us assuming it's going to be a street until the planning board makes it a street. So I guess my first question is, you guys went to the planning board, did they approve Levitt Court as being an official town way from which you can draw frontage?
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Right ahead.
So I'll, I'll attempt to answer that, Mr. Swanson, as best I can, but I know that Mr. Port as, as the city planner or director of planning and economic development can probably speak to, you know, the, the planning board's perspective on this, and I certainly don't want to speak for that board. My understanding of what the planning board said at the meeting that was held, when was it, last week, 7? Was that they were generally, they understood that what we were seeking from them was a general consensus that they would approve Levitt Court. And that the reason we were seeking that from them is because we were coming back before you, and that your approval of this project was potentially contingent upon the planning board being, being comfortable proceeding with a court and way special permit. And so my understanding is that the board gave that general consensus that they are, they are in favor of the adoption or the approval, I should say, of, of Levitt Court. They have not taken official action yet. Again, this report can speak to their statements, although I think that Sullivan in the, in the staff report that you have before you has included a statement here that the applicant appeared before the planning board for a public hearing on April 7th, relative only to the proposed shared driveway access as a courts and lanes special permit and subdivision approval. And she comments that there were no fundamental objections to the, to the requested permit. It has been our, our position, and I think this is probably what was expressed to you, although I can't say with certainty by Attorney Mead at either of the past two sessions of the public hearing, that according to documents of record, plans and such, Levitt Court was laid out by the city, was laid out as a road. Now that, we're not debating that it was never constructed as fully constructed as such, hence the term that I think you just used, paper street. But from our perspective, in terms of the process that we're now following, it's sort of six of one, half dozen of the other. We could argue, and we could attempt to establish for this board, that it exists as an existing court because of the layout, and that we have some sort of a right to construct it in its, in the location at which it was laid out many, many years ago. But we're not doing that. We're simply making an application, subdivision and special permit application under the courts and lanes provisions for, of the ordinance and the, and the subdivision rules and regulations to get the planning board to approve it as such. So we would certainly expect that any approval that this board issues, and hopefully that there will be approvals, would be subject to and contingent upon the planning board's approval, as most permits are. Typically, when permits issue, whether they're planning board permits, zoning board permits, for that matter, conservation commission permits, they typically acknowledge that, you know, all other permits and approvals required for the development to be built, as shown on the plans that have been submitted and represented to that board, must be obtained before a building permit issue. So we would expect that to be a condition for certain.
Okay, so summarizing, basically, you're saying it's, our approval would be subject to it being approved as, as a official town road, and the planning board has indicated, at least verbally, that they don't have an issue with that. So that's, I think you've addressed that, my question. Thank you for that. I have another question, which is, you know, the other issue in this for us is that little building at 27 that's currently there, that now the city solicitor, you know, the town's attorney has, or the city's attorney has raised some issues with. So I guess we're not dealing with that tonight. But I'm having a hard time understanding if the solution to dealing with that could affect what you want to do over there with that two-family house. I mean, I, it's, so I don't, I, I don't see why, since you need to get that approval, and you need two approvals from us, rather than wait to solve the issue on one of these two buildings, you're, you're trying to get, why not just wait, why not solve both issues and get both approvals at once?
Sure. So through you, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a fair question. I'm sure that you can appreciate, I, I don't know, even Mr. Swanson, but you mentioned that you had served some time on a, a planning board in another community. So familiar, if you're familiar with the planning process, and I know most of the board members are, I think you can probably appreciate from a developer's perspective that there are often multiple permits and approvals or views that are required from different boards and commissions and committees in any municipality. And this is certainly an example of that. We require approvals from the planning board. We require multiple approvals from the zoning board. There, there's something to be said for having some sense of a guarantee, a commitment by a board to allowing a particular use before you continue down the pathway toward incurring additional costs, expenses in particular. And I can cite your resources and time and effort. But we have the time and effort, of course, to put into any sort of project, but the costs are really what tend to drive the bus. And so my client from the start has considered the possibility of simply developing the site with two sizable single-family homes, which would be, as I alluded to before, more of a by right option. I don't say completely by right, because we do have a non-conforming structure on one of these lots. And so there's no question, we would need some form of relief to make modifications, alterations to that non-conforming structure. But we wouldn't need permission to build a single-family structure in the other location. And the permission would be easier to achieve overall to build single families. This proposal is a more complicated proposal, but it's also, from my perspective, and I think from my clients, and I hope from the boards, it's a more beneficial proposal for the city as a whole. Because it provides for these commitments that frankly, we wouldn't make, there wouldn't be the money to make these commitments, and there wouldn't be the incentive to make commitments to replace what could be a concrete sidewalk with a brick sidewalk, to propose extensive landscaping, to propose significant landscaping, quality landscaping along the rail trail. Those commitments wouldn't be made in the context of single-family homes. So it's simply an issue of getting a commitment from the board that we're comfortable with this concept of a two-family use. We could have permitted, we could have sought the permits sequentially. We weren't obligated to make three permit applications at once. We could have sought permission for two, two families, and then made an application a month, three months, six months later for a modification to a non-conforming structure. We made the application simultaneously. It's been brought to our attention that the modifications to the non-conforming structure may be a bit more complicated than we had originally envisioned, and we have to deal with the DCOD issue. And so we're, we're doing that now, but we'd like the commitment as we move forward and continue to invest in this proposal versus, versus a simpler proposal, that the board is generally comfortable with the two-family use of these two properties. So that's why we're asking you to take that action tonight, notwithstanding the fact that we're not quite ready on the special permit for non-conformance.
Yeah, I appreciate your answer, and to me, it's a lot simpler on the 2125 property, where it doesn't have this other issue of how are you going to deal with something the city solicitor has already said is an issue on the 27 property. So I, that's not a question, that's just a comment. So my, my last question is, I was a little surprised, I mean, it didn't come up tonight, but, you know, you, perhaps you weren't in the previous meetings, but we spent a lot of time on the scale of these buildings. These two buildings are very, very large, much larger than anything else in the neighborhood. And I think Attorney Mead did a inventive thing where she said, well, you know, the lots are really big too. So if you make them the same percentage coverage as all the other lots in the neighborhood, you can build really big buildings, and they're sort of all the same. At the end of the day, they're not the same. They're much, they'll be, they'll be the biggest residential buildings in the neighborhood by far. And so I thought the city came up with some interesting suggestion for you, which was, well, why don't you, instead of building two gigantic, two-family homes, split them and build four single-family homes? And I, I just want to make sure, and this could also solve the issue with 27. And the fact that a, you know, a historic home there has been sort of swallowed up, so you can't find it anymore, that the city solicitor pointed out, you could solve both things with this issue. And I was trying to make sure I heard the objection to, to this, because most developers I know, if they were given the opportunity to build four single-family homes rather than two, two-family homes, they'd usually go for the four single-family homes. It would certainly also reduce the scale and massing look of this thing, which was the big issue that came up in our previous hearings. So I think what I heard you say was it looks like a moving target because the city might change it. But I guess what I understand is you could just make a proposal, and, and it's, therefore, it's whatever it is, the day you propose it, it doesn't matter if the city changes the zoning after that. You could just throw it on the table and say, yeah, I'd like to do it. Here's, here's my plan, like, you know, file a, an amendment with the city, city clerk and move on. I don't understand why, why you're not jumping on that, because you cut, you would solve, you would solve a lot of the problems that have come up from this board.
Mr. Chairman, again, through you.
Yep.
So I've, I've got a few different ways to respond to that. And I guess the first thing I'll say is you commented on, you know, it not coming up tonight, and whether that was maybe because I, I hadn't been in attendance at the prior sessions of your public hearing or otherwise. But, but that's not it. I mean, I understood that this is something that had been raised. I discussed it with the clients, and I discussed it with Attorney Mead as well. Part of the reason why I didn't, it didn't come up, and I didn't reference it is because, to go back to a comment I made earlier, generally, this concept of massing or architectural style or size of the building for the lot is not something that's within the zoning board's purview as much as it is within the planning board's purview. So I certainly didn't make it a focus of the presentation tonight, nor have we made it a focus of the, the written submittals we've made, although I understand that it has been raised by at least one, maybe two board members, maybe other board members or members of the public. But that's why it hasn't been a focus, and it wasn't something I touched upon tonight. I did say that we recognize the comment, but I don't want to call it a recommendation. It was a comment. I, as I read the staff memorandum, I don't read the staff memorandum to, to, to say any of what you maybe suggested is the wrong word, but what you've referred to, which is a concern for the massing and the structures being out of character, maybe with the neighborhood because of their size compared to others. I, I don't read the, the, the staff memo to necessarily say that. In fact, I, I read it to say, you know, quite the opposite, that there is no general support for this proposal at the staff level, at least. But there was a, there was a comment, a suggestion, a note, that the applicant might consider a 6C special permit. And as I had said earlier, there are a number of reasons why we haven't done that yet. Number one, this proposal is before you, and we wanted a sense as to whether two-family would be an option. We haven't closed the door on the concept of a 6C. I would suggest to you that it's not necessarily as simple as you've described it. I wish that it was for many reasons. Regardless of what hat I'm wearing, applicant hat or municipal hat, I wish it were as simple as you just make an application at the time that, that you were prepared to do so, and the rules that are in effect at that time are the rules that are in effect. It's sometimes a bit of a moving target when you've got potential zoning changes that have been advertised that are in committee, but that have not yet, have not yet taken effect because of the different. Um, because of the difference in in effective date, whether it be the date of the city council action, whether it be the date on which the advertising of a public hearing occurs. When it's referred to committee. So it is somewhat of a moving target from us. We've had this discussion we have with our client. And again, sixty is a definite option. I also got the sense and. I I'd be very much curious to know whether uh, Mr. Port got the same sense, but I got the sense and. And the conversations we've had internally following the meeting on. On April seventh, that you know what, the concept of a succeed. That may not be simple. It might not be a shoe in. It might not be something that the planning board is necessarily. Prepared to endorse. And so there's some uncertainty there too. And so we have this this two family proposal. Um, before the zoning board, it is a use special permit and nothing more. And so we decided to to continue to pursue it and hope that we could get the requisite vote for this proposal. Understanding that we may be back before you if we all if we decide to alter it, to change it. Uh, whether it be as part of the redesign of twenty seven or just an overall vision for the site. And it becomes for freestanding singles as opposed to two tubes, as you suggested.
Um, yeah, I appreciate that. I I, you know. When it comes to massing, um, the issue that's not on the table for us tonight, but which very much is a zoning board issue is the is the setback. On the building at twenty seven. There we need to consider massing and as as and that's what came up in the previous meetings. It's unfortunate you were not here for them. But in considering the massing for for that, you know, considering that. Request, we do need to consider the massing. So that's how we got here. Anyway, I appreciate your answer. I kind of understand this is a complex project with a lot of moving parts and a couple of different boards. And I can see what you're doing. And in the past, by the way, we've also said, I, you know, I for one, don't have a particular issue. With two family use. It it's some of these other issues. Around massing and other things. So I know I really, I guess it's it's kind of complicated. Anyway, those are my questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Uh, moving on to Mr. Channing. Do you have any questions?
Uh, my questions have been asked and answered, Chair. So uh, so I'm good. Thank you.
Excellent. Move on. Uh, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Uh. Do I understand that? Well, first let me preface my questions by. Uh, observing that, of course, we have two separate lots under two separate regulatory regimes. But nevertheless, they're holistic. Uh, both. In the way the applicant treats it and uh, in the way we are looking at it. And I think that makes good sense. So. My first question is with respect to twenty one dash twenty five, do we have the final architectural plans for that structure?
Uh, Mister Chairman, I can answer that through you. So you you have certainly permitting plans. Um, a- as you know, often permitting plans are not quite the same as final architecturals from a. From a building department or or construction standpoint, but we did submit architectural plans. In fact, they're a bit later on. At the the last few slides in this PowerPoint or PDF presentation. I had included them for that reason in the event that.
Okay, I I guess my question is, do we have plans for twenty one and twenty five, which meet? The zoning board rules regarding specific specificity regarding design and. Architecture of a structure. For our approval.
So, um, uh, Mister Chairman, through you, I'll I'll attempt to answer that. And again, I'll 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 welcome, although I guess it's less my role and more yours, Mister Chairman, but I would invite. Um, comment from from Mr. Port as well, but. Um, with respect to the twenty one through twenty five property. The architectural review was not before the zoning, the architectural review would be before the planning board. You have, you have broader review. Uh, no doubt with respect to twenty seven Hancock Street because twenty seven requires. That special permit for nonconformities. And because it is a preexisting nonconforming structure. You have a say as a zoning board of appeals over alterations to that structure. Um, so you would have the ability then to to review and to approve. Uh, with some greater detail, uh, elevation plans or architectural plans.
Uh, I understand that. My question is very simple and maybe I'm being a little uh. Dense about this, but I would like to know that the plans that you're submitting to us for twenty one and twenty five are what you intend to build.
Uh, this is Andy. I I will leave it to the applicant to confirm that this is, uh, in fact, the final set of plans or or are designed for construction, but they do uh, provide enough specificity. Uh, for the board to make a decision on.
That's what I want to know.
The design, that's a separate question, but the.
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha. That's all I want to know. Second question, we have no plans regarding twenty lot twenty seven, correct? So we're, you're asking for an advisory opinion essentially.
Through you, Mister Chairman. So so no, I'm not. I I'm, I I again, I would, we we are not asking for you to take any action. On the special permit for nonconformity.
No, I'm not talking about the special permit. I'm talking about the. I'm not talking about the special permit for nonconformities.
So the other special permit is a use special permit.
I understand.
Okay.
I know it's just for use, but we have no plans to to. To. Educate us regarding what use you intend beyond the fact that you're going to. Place a two unit. Structure there.
Right. So we we did submit plans. They're part of the plan set. Um, I don't think that they're the current plans. Uh, these are twenty seven. Yes. So the plan set that you see currently on your screen. But we've indicated to you that the reason we're seeking a continuance. Of the other special permit application is does we do intend to make changes to these plans.
Right. So. I guess I I I go back to the previous remarks. We. We have kind of an. I mean, this. I have, I have, I I guess I have a. Somewhat of a concern about having a piecemeal approach to approval of this project. I guess that's what I'm saying. And I know you can take that risk, but. This is a holistic undertaking. And I I just have that concern, so. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Mister Bennet. Uh, I think my colleagues have asked, uh, most of the pertinent questions. I did want to maybe a a couple of. Comments from a butters that had questions. One was concerning the timing of any work on. On the brick walks when that would go in and I I don't know if anyone could speak to that. Either the applicant or. Architect on what the timing would likely be on that, assuming approval, assuming. It moves forward.
Mister Chairman, I I can address that to that information. So the the proposal would be as it often is with. Um, with with finish improvements, landscaping, uh, you know, final, final coat of pavement, uh, brick sidewalks that occurs. At the conclusion of the process toward the end of the process process. I don't want to say it at the at the at the absolute last moment. Uh, in the construction schedule, but the expectation would be that when there is, you know, uh, construction vehicles entering and exiting the site, when there's. Uh, landscaping being installed and whatnot, but the brick sidewalks from acting at that time, they would be installed toward the conclusion of the project.
Fair enough. I appreciate that, Mister Costa. Um, this one's probably more not to Andy's and it's not our purview, but just a quick question on affordability slash forty B. Requirements of anyone coming in to build something and and. It's not something that the Z P A is concerned with, but just I know if you make a brief comment on that.
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
Um, how, there was a a concern from or a butter about affordability and questions about how affordable it would be. And it's not the zoning board's purview, but I just wondered if you could just briefly.
Yeah.
Elucidate on when issues like that come up and how they're dealt with.
Yeah, I I mean, it's a very valid question, uh, but uh, you're correct. It's not something that the board here has uh, the ability to regulate. There's. Um, it's sort of a convoluted uh, nature of regulation in Massachusetts, um, some of which is local. Um, but there are triggers for projects on the small projects like this. There are not uh, the triggers to um, compel a contribution for affordable housing. Um, but uh, there are, uh, there is the potential for that. One of which might be uh, the so-called sixty special permit that was referenced tonight, if that is used. Um, but there are, there are other sections of the ordinance that trigger uh, for larger projects. Uh, what we call inclusionary housing, meaning that if you're building housing of a certain number of units, you have to include uh, affordable units. Um, projects that are below that threshold don't um, don't treat that ordinance and this project is below that threshold for both lots. Uh, and even combined. So um, at any rate, um, it's a valid concern, but um, I think in in terms of, you know, the fact that these units will probably be larger. Um, and um, won't necessarily even provide the little A affordable units that that say aren't redeemed restricted but are small. Um, it's it's a valid question or concern, uh, but it's not something that this board has any purview over, um, I guess generically.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I just didn't want to let that uh, that concern go unaddressed or. As briefly as we could touch on that one. Um, that concludes any questions that I had. Um, the board is pretty thorough with questions, so um, we'll close questions from the board and move on to deliberations. And I will start with uh, Mister Delisle.
Mister Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Could I just have a brief opportunity to maybe address one or two outstanding items I have in my notes?
Uh, yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so uh, these are just a couple of comments. Um, one refers back to something that one of the. Residents had said, and uh, again, it may fall into the category of something that is. Beyond the purview of your board, but I I don't want it to be perceived as us avoiding the question or or being nonresponsive. And that was a question about. Uh, drainage and how drainage will affect the rail trail, how drainage will affect. Uh, neighboring properties, let's say, or the roadway. Um, we have submitted information, um, statements and such to the planning board as part of our application package, obviously not something within. The zoning board of appeals purview, so we haven't submitted much to you, but we do believe that the drainage is designed for the site site. And the stormwater management plan will be an improvement upon uh, existing conditions. Um, particularly since the site was uh, developed many years ago and it doesn't have any any stormwater management. Uh, system or plan per se. So that is not something that um, we presented to your board, but it is something that we've taken into consideration. And we have addressed and will continue to address if the planning board has uh, has further questions for us, uh, as that permitting process unfolds. Um, the the second point I want to make is just in in response to something I've heard from a couple of members now and I'm. I'm always mindful as you enter the deliberation stage that, you know, special permits require. Uh, a four out of five vote as you announced, uh, as Mr. Chantetti had announced at the start at the outset of uh, tonight's public hearing. So. Uh, I I I like unanimous support. I certainly want support of four or five members and nothing less. And. You know, if if it is something less than that's an effective denial, even if it's a three to two vote. Uh, and we're back to the drawing board and my clients made it very clear that back to the drawing board is. Is probably not investing further money in this sort of a design, but simply constructing single family homes and. Um, you know, I I think that that's a lose lose. I think it's a lose for my client, but I also think it's a. A lose for the city in terms of the additional uh, benefits that are being offered. Um, the the mitigation, let's say that's being offered, some of which you see on your screen here with the. Um, the the sidewalks and the rail trail screening and the site landscaping and so forth. What's before you is a question, at least in the context of two of these three applications, the two that we are pursuing tonight. A question of use, whether two family use is appropriate and whether two family use checks all the boxes, the nine enumerated criteria and the zoning ordinance. And so I I I reiterate that, um, not because I I think you don't know it because I think you do. Um, but because. In many instances, and I can't say that I've done this with any great frequency and with any of the boards uh, that I appear before. Um, but in some communities, it's the norm. That when you're seeking a use special permit, you simply submit a narrative that explains what use you want to make of the property and you get. A yay or a nay from the municipal board, the zoning board of appeals, for example. Um, we've always tried as a firm and representing the clients we do in the community to submit comprehensive application packages. I think the board knows that. We submit narratives. Uh, we submit updates from from meeting to meeting. We submit plans, whether they be site plans or architectural elevations or renderings. Landscape plans, lighting plans, whatever's necessary for a particular project. Um, I think the board has become accustomed to that and I think it's a good thing to have that additional information. But I also wanted to be, want to be clear in representing my client's interest that. None of that, from my perspective, is a requirement for a use special permit. So you don't have final plans or permitting plans. You have an earlier version of plans for the structure of twenty seven. But that doesn't change the question of whether a two family use is appropriate and checks the the nine criteria, checks those boxes. In the zoning board. So I would hope that the board, while it might prefer that applicants pursue permitting simultaneously, all permits and approvals required. Would recognize that the question we're asking of you tonight as an applicant. Is whether a two family use can be deemed appropriate for these two properties. And for twenty one to twenty five, that's all we need from you is a use determination. And for twenty seven, you get an extra bite at the apple because we need the modification of the preexisting nonconforming structure. And so we will be back before you and you'll have your opportunity to review plans and approve plans. For any modifications to make to that structure because that's what the ordinance requires. And that, of course, is all in addition to. The planning board having its bite at the apple, uh, in approving and approving the new uh, court or lane. Under its uh, under, under its provisions of the ordinance and the subdivision rules and regulations. So with that, uh, appreciate the board's consideration and. We'll uh, we'll turn the floor back over to you, Mister Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mister Costa. Okay, with that said, um. We will now move on to deliberations. Um, and again, with respect to these applications, we are discussing. Two family use for both twenty seven Hancock Street and twenty one twenty five, and there will be an additional consideration of a. Of uh, continuance. For the special permit for nonconformities. So we'll kind of hopefully. Have our discussions, um. Wrap around those, the issues involved with each. So I'll start out with Mister Delisle.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, so it sounds like with respect to uh, what we have to do tonight. For this project or or these two projects. Uh, the. Plans as. Provided for twenty one, twenty five, uh, Hancock Street. Are what the plans are and we're asked to approve the special uh, permit for two family use. And I think that with respect to uh. Both properties, the. Special permit for the two family use. Seems to be appropriate, uh, an appropriate. Solution for these properties and also as Mister Costa has gone through the uh. The factors, the nine factors for the special permit for two family use. The. Proposal as it's presented to us meets those factors. However, we we seem to have some. You know, we still have concern. Uh, and it's echoed by a number of the members of the board. And I I read the uh, the. Planning offices uh, memo to be a little bit more, uh, I think. To emphasize that massing and size issue a little bit more than Mister Costa did, it would appear. Um. So I I find myself. Okay, with the the two family use on both, uh. Both parcels, but at the same time. I'm not sure that we as a board are in the in the right place to to have a vote tonight, and I don't know if if the other members of the board feel. Differently, so I will uh, pause my deliberations here and pass the baton onward.
Thank you, Mister Delisle. And with that passing of the baton, we'll go to Mister Swanton.
Yeah, um, it took a moment to find unmute. Um. I I actually, I think Mister Delisle has has often said it quite well. Um. To me. Part of the problem here is on twenty seven. We do need to consider massing in the special permit. That's not on the table tonight, but is. Pretty much part of the same project. And on that special permit. We've already had the. Town, the the city's lawyer say there's an issue here. This needs to go to the historic commission before we should be seeing it. So it's, you know, I. I think Mister Bennet, he used the word piecemeal. I'm feeling a little bit like that here. That when it comes to twenty seven, it's. Kind of piecemeal. Now, if you're looking for whether or not we're okay with two family, you know, this is the third meeting that I've said. In general, I'm okay with two family. But it's hard for me to approve a two family with this piecemeal outstanding issue that the. City's attorney has already raised an issue with. So it's, you know, I'm I'm a little. Lost here as to why it's okay when you go to the planning board and they all say, oh, fine. Yeah, we'll make Leverett Court of Street. Don't worry about it. And you come here and you will say, yeah, in general, we're fine with two family uses. Don't worry about it. But now we've got to approve this piecemeal outside of when we know there's an issue that the. City's lawyer has already flagged. So it's, I I'm uncomfortable with just a blanket okay on this whole project. Uh, given the piecemeal nature of it. So that's kind of where I am.
Okay, thank you, Mister Swanton. Uh, Mister Chagrin.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Um. I I I guess I mimic some of the comments made by uh, my previous colleagues. Uh. However, with that said, I am comfortable with the two family use for both structures. Uh, little uncomfortable with the way we're going about it. You know, I think it would have been uh. Uh, better to take it as a holistic approach. Better to take it as a holistic approach, but with what's before us today, I'd be okay with the continuance on this. On twenty seven. For the nonconformities, but I'd I'd be able to support two family use for the for the two buildings as requested. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, well, this is a little. I guess it's somewhat out of the ordinary, isn't it? I mean. We have two separate lots. Over which two separate regulatory schemes apply, yet we're looking at them as a holistic project. And on the one hand, I I take the applicant's. Counsel that we can uncouple this in in a way which meets the letter of the of the ordinance and I think. I would. Possibly agree with that, certainly as it relates to twenty one and twenty five. I do have a problem, even though I I've expressed my support of. Two family unit on both of these parcels, but I do have a concern that we set. A precedent where we are doing a project piecemeal. When the applicant is is on the verge of coming back to us, and I'm not sure if if we save the applicant. Anytime if we if we were to do that, and I'm all for trying to streamline his regulatory process as as we can. So. I. You know, I I think certainly the the regulatory requirements are met with respect to twenty one and twenty five. I feel we have discretion on on withholding decision on twenty seven. Because it comes with another obligation that we can't rule on yet. So. I'm not sure if we can split the split the baby in that fashion, but. I don't know if that would be appealing to the applicant or not, if that helps the applicant. Or we simply defer. Until we have the. The plans we need to make a thoughtful and intelligent decision on lot twenty seven.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I assume you're done. I didn't mean to cut you off. I I kind of fall in the category of of Mr. Chagrin on this. I. There's a lot of. A lot of really positive things to this development. We even heard that from a butters. There's been some really thoughtful addressing. Of, I think. Placement of mostly, you know, with the rail to rail trail addressing plantings to make it fit in better and maybe. Even disguise some of the changes to. The landscape, but overall, it's it's a really, it's a really. Strong improvement to what's there. You know, that said, there are a lot of moving parts to to part of this, but. It with respect to twenty seven, we do have more control over that. In that there has to be special permit for nonconformities that we will get to discuss over size and massing, so. That will come up again, you know, regardless of what the outcome is or not regardless, after the decision is made. With respect to the treatment of the historic building that's being dealt with. So we will get to make a decision on that with respect to size and massing with respect to twenty one and twenty five. I I think we can look at that as is and look at that as is two family. Use one O two acceptable on on that, and I think as a group, we've all been in favor of that, so. I lean more towards. Going forward with the two family use on this. But I'm not sure that that's enough to get us over the hump on on that, so. I don't know if there's any more deliberation, any more comment that anyone would like to add in before a.
This this is Greg Bennet again.
Yeah.
I want to be clear, I if it's the consensus of you, my colleagues, that we should go forward with twenty seven. I I certainly will support that because we do have another opportunity to review that. And, you know, the applicant takes that approval for what it's worth. And it may or may not be worth a lot depending on what the applicant comes back with, so. I I just raise it more as a maybe a philosophical question or a procedural question. With respect to this project, because it's such a, you know, an integrated project. My in my inclination would be to have. A crisp, tight application in front of us, but but I will say this, that, you know, when I tick through the nine criteria. You know, I I will be the first to say. That those criteria have been met. Nevertheless, I don't, I do not believe that it precludes the zoning board. Of appeals from saying that nevertheless, because of the unique nature of this project, we could. Continue until we get a more complete application, which permits us to address the other request to relieve as well.
That's that's fair enough, and and I would I would agree with your sentiment on that as well. I wouldn't, I I don't mean to speak for the board here, but I think, like I said, we've all been in favor of the two family use. It's more of. It seems we keep coming back and getting, hey, can we just get this approval? And I understand from a developer standpoint. You know, putting money into a project when you're not really, we don't have it in writing that's going to be an approval, but I I. We I can't imagine we've been more clear without having a vote on this. But with a lot of moving parts here, I certainly understand the reticence of some of the board members, so. At this point, I will, before we we go to entertaining motions on all three applications tonight, I would like to. Given that the Mr. Costa, you've heard the discussion, even a client have heard the discussion and deliberations, is there anything that would? Make you consider. Or have interest in a continuance of everything? Or would you rather go forward with a vote tonight?
So so thank you, Mr. Chair. So I I'd like to say a a thing or two, and then. Because my client is participating as well. Maybe maybe yield the floor to him and let him make the final call. This this used to be a whole lot easier back in the good old days. And I could see your faces and you could see mine, and I could have my client whisper into my ear, but it doesn't doesn't quite work that way with the with the Zoom format, so. So I I I see that I it doesn't appear from what members have said that I. Have the requisite number of votes, at least with respect to twenty seven. I I think that's unfortunate. I I appreciate the sentiments I've heard. I've heard them from other boards, some I represent in the past. I don't necessarily agree with them, but I don't need to. It's those are the sentiments of the board. Certainly, I I also thought I heard a general consensus amongst the board. That there was a comfort with the twenty one through twenty five Hancock Street two family. And a recognition that you do have plans before you for that particular residence, that particular structure. And that no further relief is required. So I I would like to think that minimally, the board might be prepared. To grant the special permit for the two family use on that property, at least, you know, from from my client's perspective, I would think, and again, I'll let him. Speak for himself, but I would think that that would be, you know, an even better showing of of support, of good faith. By the board that that is prepared to allow a two family use to go forward on that lot. And then maybe maybe continue the two family special permit for twenty seven to to follow along and in concert with. The special permit for nonconformities. That that's the only way that I could potentially see splitting it down the middle here and and leaving here with with some sort of definitive statement from the board, maybe not as much as we had hoped for. With that, if if you would, Mr. Chairman, yield the floor to Jake Haswell. I'd invite him to offer any thoughts he might have.
Sure.
Hi, this is Jake Haswell. I can understand the frustration you guys are all having with this project, and I share that frustration as well. Just to back up way back when we were doing this, going forward, we didn't, we were presented this. We thought we were all good with our presentation as it was constituted with twenty seven Hancock Street. Being attached, because as we read the ordinance, it was good to be able to do that. Well, it's been referenced before KP took a look at. While we went to the second meeting and they changed the ruling that we had gotten. So what that did was. That put us into our like a major tailspin on what we need to do with this project moving forward. In that, so just, you know, no fault of anyone, so the design criteria for the boards is pretty extensive. There's elevations, there's big financial, you know, commitments to. Design of windows elevation, every, you know, everyone wants to see every little thing and moving forward, which, you know, is is completely understandable. You know, I worked hand in hand with the city about the planting and everything else, worked in good faith and everything. Quite frankly. I've said this to the planning board and inform me with the planning board in the city council when they were talking about six C, which I see is really. The best alternative, but as spoken before, six C isn't as easy as everyone thinks. It's not, it's been advertised, it's in flux. They're talking about. You know, having two criterias you have to meet. Six C is a perfect thing for this project, but six C currently on your books, I can't do it. So as you sit as a developer, you have huge financial commitments in into the design phase of it, which money that was probably put towards. The construction of the road of Leverett Court. So then you have to sit there and weigh your alternatives, how many times you're gonna get. Thrown around and designed and everything else. And then, you know, when design comes in, quite honestly, you know, I know there's a lot of massing questions. Myself and Eileen Graft took a lot of care in designing this. I don't know if you guys know anything about me. I grew up in Newburyport. I graduated high school in Newburyport. I do stuff in Newburyport. I'm not going to come here, trash the town, do something bad, because I live here and fully invested the town. So with that being said, we went in there with the design of one and a half stories for a reason. We didn't want to go pushing to thirty five feet. We didn't want to go massing. You know, by right. You know, I know that Lisa kept mentioning. The size of the lots, the size of the lots, the size of the lots. I think that was, you know, I think that was missing the mark on the interpretation, because the interpretation of that is. Those are by right singles. By right singles are massive. I don't think. By right massive singles are the right thing for here. And I've said in the past to the planning board, what's better for the town? Is something that an upper middle class, four units of upper middle class people can afford to buy better for the town. Or super high end massive homes. I've grown up here. I've seen the change in the town. I know the difference between what's right and what's wrong. It's on the railroads, in the South End. The scaling is correct, in my opinion. With that being said, I mean, everyone's going to have their own input, but a lot of thought went into the design of that. So we get to the point where money's spent on architects. I'm willing to plant the city trees. I'm willing to put the sidewalks in. And you know, it's that's not all just because I'm trying to jam something down somebody's throat. I got buzzsawed with historic. I have to redesign twenty seven. I need some clarity on which direction the boards are going to go, because I will not. Continue to beat my head against the wall. In vagaries when I can just go pull building permit and do singles. I just would like to get some clarity one way or another of our direction. So. You know, I've met with people, six C is probable, six C is what my preferred approach. With that being said, I'm ninety eight percent down through this. Where we're at now. I'm not asking for, you know, an approval on the design of twenty seven. I realize twenty seven is a mess. I realize it more than anybody does. But the reality is, you know, to be approved for a use is different than being approved for a design. I have to come back with a design for twenty seven. So when I come back for a design for twenty seven, we can get into configuration and everything else. I just, you know. There's certain parameters I've designed to, you know, originally, this was an R three zoned R three downtown Newburyport. So, you know, five, six years ago, if Leverett Court got approved, that would have been a by right for detached. The city council and whoever makes the rules changes to R two. R two set the design parameters that I have, I can only do multis. That I go into two families and two families driven by the Zordon ordinance, they have to, I have to attach by fifty percent of the adjoining wall. And that's why the massing starts looking bigger than even I would like. But the reality is those are the design criterias I have to work with, and those are the parameters I have to work with. So. I get the rules, I work within the rules, and the design gets driven from there, thinking, okay, I have to meet by a certain amount, but I don't want too big. So, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, if it's, I don't want to get shot down, but you know, it's. Twenty one twenty five is pretty much set in stone. I would think a use of. You know, just to say, yeah, you get two family use, but when you come back. You know, we'll look at the design after that. I would think, you know, I've worked in a lot of good faith in the town, and I think if you talk to Andy, Andy's seen me more than a few times over this. And Andy maybe could speak to it. We're looking for the best solution for the best benefit for the town. But I'll get to the point eventually where we're into April now. You know, it's, it can't just go on forever. I don't know if that helped me and hurt me or what, but I mean, I just want at least you guys to get it from me, because the attorneys are always talking. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate that, Mr. Caswell. And we certainly understand the desire with the investment you've already made. And the considerations that you've made to have some clarity on this, so. Continuing with deliberations is. Is the board, I'll just kind of, I don't want to straw poll it, but additional comments with respect to moving on twenty one twenty five. To a vote and whether we thought that would be. Something that we take a straw poll and thumbs up, thumbs down type of thing, so we get some clarity on whether we're going to move forward with any of these. And I guess I'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thanks, Mr. Moore. So the comments were very helpful. I mean, I think that the board and the developer are sort of. Would like the same thing and are coming at it from the opposite end of the tunnel. And it's sort of the the design criteria that are standing in the way. And that's that's too bad, because like Mr. Caswell, I think that six C would be a pretty good solution here. And would make a lot of sense. So with regard to twenty one twenty five, I think. You know, if we're looking at this now not holistically and we're just looking at this one parcel. I think that we've we've talked about this with respect to the nine factors. For the change to a two family use, and I think that we've we've indicated. Mo, I think. All the members of the board have indicated that these factors are have been ticked off by Mr. Costa. I think that the. The difficulty is how these two things work together. And I'm not sure, you know, if we're if we're thinking about this, it's just as twenty one twenty five at this point, that and we're decoupling from twenty seven. I think that makes it a little clearer that, you know, the the that we can. We can say that these these factors for two family use have been satisfied.
So maybe would it be, does decoupling, is decoupling agreeable to the board, I guess, would be how we phrase the discussion now, so. And we'll move on. I don't know if that makes sense. Does it? I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, Mark.
Okay.
Mr. Moore.
That's fine. We're on a first name basis. Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I too think it makes sense. I think it would be. You know, it was good to hear from the owner in this case, and. You know, rather than always through the lawyers. And I realize it can get frustrating, but it, we've said enough times, we're okay with two family. In the case of twenty one twenty five, there are no other issues that. Are in front of us or will be in front of us soon, so. I think a nice thing to do would be to prove to approve twenty one twenty five for two family use. Subject to, I liked that language earlier, subject to the planning board creating Levitt Court, but I assume that's. Wouldn't hurt because that has to happen anyway. But anyway, I could get behind twenty one twenty five.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chagrin, I think I know where you stand.
Yeah, agreed. I I can get behind twenty one twenty five, and I I guess to help the client. help the client, maybe the thing to do is we take that up, vote for it, and ask for continuance on the family for twenty seven, see if he would support that, and we can take it up at a later date and and, and deal with it once we have all our ducks in a row.
Understood. Uh, Mr. Bennet?
Right, I would agree. I mean, as a, as a pure legal matter, these are two separate applications. Uh so the uncoupling is by law, if you will, although practically speaking, they're not. Um and I, I appreciate Mr. Caswell's comments. I think our approach here will permit him to uh start uh his project uh on a, hopefully a somewhat of a timely basis while uh he and his advisors think through the best approach uh relative to lot twenty seven. So I certainly support approving the uh special permit for twenty one dash twenty five.
Okay. Well, I mean, that was a good, that's a good discussion, I think. Um a- and I have, like all of you, had trouble separating this, because it was presented to us together. It presented to us as a, as something that was connected, and it is connected. But still, the twenty one twenty five, we, we do have plans. They are acceptable um plans, and really the only question before us is, is two family use now. This twenty seven applicant has asked for a continuance on the nonconformities, which would allow an, another, have to come back before us anyway, which also allows a vote on two family use, which I don't see ever, uh I can't see given discussions being a problem. But I think um maybe separating this this way would be the way to go forward. All right, that said, I will close deliberations. And we will look to entertain a motion, starting with uh the request for a continuance for uh I guess the application with twenty twenty one dash zero two. We'll start there. We'll just work down in order.
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make a motion to continue the special permit for nonconformities for twenty seven Hancock Street, file number twenty twenty one dash zero two. And that will be continued to the meeting of May eleventh, twenty twenty one.
Seconded, Ken Swanton.
Hey, we have a motion to continue to May eleventh, made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton. We will now vote. Uh, Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Well, just a clarification, are we also uh extending the application for twenty twenty one dash oh three, which is the special permit?
We are gonna, we vote on that separately.
Okay, excuse me. Then I uh, I say yes for the motion on the table.
Okay. And I also, yes, so that's all the affirmative. So the twenty twenty one dash zero two special permit for nonconformities is continued to May eleventh. And now we'll move on to application twenty twenty one dash zero three, a special permit for two family use for twenty seven Hancock Street.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We would seek a continuance of that as well to your May eleventh meeting.
Understood. We have a request from the applicant to continue that as well to the eleventh meeting, I mean, the meeting on the eleventh. And do we have a motion?
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll make the, the motion uh to continue the special permit for change of use for twenty seven Hancock Street, file number twenty twenty one dash three to the meeting of May eleventh, twenty twenty one.
Seconded, Ken Swanton.
A motion made and seconded by my Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton to continue twenty one dash zero three, also to the eleventh. Um and we will take a vote. I'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Moore is also, yes, Mr. Champetti is recused. I didn't mention that in the first vote, but I guess that was understood. All the affirmative twenty one twenty, I mean, twenty twenty one dash zero three for two family use on twenty seven Hancock Street is continued to the eleventh. Uh, we're moving to the last application will be for twenty one twenty five Hancock Street, zero four.
This is Bud Shagnon. I'll uh make a motion to approve the special permit to allow uh two family use for twenty one to twenty five Hancock Street, application twenty twenty one dash zero four.
I'll second the motion. Greg Bennet?
Now, with this piece, would we include the language subject to the plenty board uh creating this street? Is, is this where this goes? This came up earlier.
Uh, this is Andy. That would seem reasonable to me to put that as a uh condition or language in the decision on this one.
So I recommend that. Is, is that okay with you guys who proposed it?
Amendment?
With the condition, are we good?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Um so we have a, a motion, Mr. Chagman, seconded by Mr. Bennet, to approve with conditions on the street being approved. And now we'll take a vote. Oh, for two family use, that is. And we take a vote now. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. Champetti's recused. Mr. Moore is yes, all in the affirmative to family use is permitted to twenty one twenty five Hancock Street with conditions. I believe that wraps up that application for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank everyone for their patience on me uh working through that one. With that, out of the bullpen, we bring back the chairman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Moore.
I hope hasn't blown his arm out. That was a while.
No worries. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Moore. And uh again, good evening, everyone. Uh, Rob Champetti, Chair. I am going to jump right into the next application on our, or actually the next and last one uh on our public hearing agenda this evening. Uh, this is the matter of one ninety five High Street. Hebbelink uh real estate LLC, care of Lisa Mead, me, Talman and Costa LLC. Uh, but before we, uh, we commence with that, I make one procedural note that um our board member, Mr. Stephen Delisle, will be recusing himself this evening. And with that, Andy, uh can I ask you to kindly, though respectfully, demote Mr. uh, Mr. Delisle from the panel and promote him to the audience? Um and uh, once we do that, we will, um, I'll just then re-note and remind everyone that uh our five voting members this evening, in the absence of uh Mr. Delisle, is uh myself, Rob Champetti, Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Ken Swanton, Mr. Walter Channon, and Mr. Gregory Bennett. Uh, so with that taken care of, what's that?
So done, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, with that, I will go ahead and read the um application notice, and then we will hear uh from the um, the applicant, or in this case, the um, the petitioner on the appeal. So uh, this is the matter of uh an appeal, docket twenty one twenty, a doctor, docket twenty twenty one dash fourteen on one ninety five High Street, an appeal of the building inspector's issuance of a building permit for the alteration and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming structure for a different use. With that, and I also note for the record, uh, that in the um, among the panelists this, this evening, uh, we have our city solicitor, uh attorney Eichmann from Cobleman and Page, uh, who has provided our board with a uh, a legal opinion uh on this matter, and we will I will certainly invite attorney Eichmann to uh offer a summary or detail uh with respect to that for the benefit of all those in attendance, as well as the board itself. Uh, with that, may we hear from the petitioner, um, Mr. Attorney Adam Costa on behalf of the petitioner.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Adam Costa with me, Talman and Costa on behalf of Hebbelink Real Estate LLC, which is the petitioner before the board with respect to this application. Um, I would like to uh begin with a general overview of the petition that's before you. Um, I will try to keep it as simple as possible. I understand that the subject matter, which is uh, nonconformities is a rather complex one, and we're gonna get deep into it in terms of the second accept clause to the statute and the difference between uh alterations or modifications to non-conforming single or two-family structures as opposed to other types of structures. Um, again, I'll try and speak clearly and slowly and uh work through this um as efficiently um as possible. Uh, so the property at one ninety five High Street, which is immediately adjacent to my client's property at one ninety three High Street, uh is owned by uh, uh, Mr. Delisle and by Bryn Stevens. And they made application to the uh building commissioner's office for what is referred to as a barn renovation or restoration at uh that one ninety five High Street property. Uh, a building permitted issue for that work uh to occur. And we have subsequently, or did subsequently file within the requisite time period, an appeal with your board. It's an administrative appeal. And as you know, as a zoning board of appeals, when uh, when there are challenges to building permits that are issued, and those challenges are not the consequence of building code violations, but rather uh what are perceived to be violations of the zoning ordinance, uh, those appeals go to you, and you perform an adjudicatory function in hearing the evidence from the petitioner, hearing any uh countervailing evidence from uh, from the, the property owner. And uh, lucky you, you get to make a determination as to who is right and who is wrong. So we've advanced, you have uh presumably before you, uh, and I don't know that it necessarily needs to be put on the screen, but I think you have the full application package, which includes importantly, because I'm going to, to work through it uh tonight. Um, uh, correspondence dated March third, uh, signed by me. Um, that uh is several pages long, I think four pages in total. Each page is numbered at the bottom. Uh, and this presents uh our, our argument with respect to uh this property and why a building permit should not have issued. Um, to begin, and I think this is important, I'd like to make it uh abundantly clear for board members what it is that we are, are not challenging, what we are, are not alleging as part of this appeal. We are not alleging that the barn at issue is not a non-conforming structure. We are essentially conceding that it's a non-conforming structure. Uh, similarly, we're not arguing that the structure isn't entitled to the protections that both state law and your zoning ordinance afford to pre-existing non-conforming structures. Um, finally, we're, we're not arguing that there isn't a procedure by which uh an owner of a pre-existing non-conforming structure can get appropriate relief to make modifications to that structure or to the use of that structure. We acknowledge there is such a procedure. In fact, just a few moments ago, I was representing a different applicant and was having a discussion with you, the board members, about a special permit for nonconformity. So we recognize that there is a process for that relief to issue. The, the issue that we contest and the issue that we bring forward to the zoning board tonight is that this particular barn structure was obligated to come before you, not in this context, not in the form of an administrative appeal, but was required to come before you seeking a special permit for nonconformities. And we've essentially made two arguments to support um that position. Uh, the first is that the building permit was for a structural alteration to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and that triggered the need for a special permit. And secondly, that the permit also allows for a change of use of the pre-existing non-conforming structure. And that independently, separately additionally, triggered the need for a special permit. And frankly, if we succeed with either of those arguments, the end result is that there's a need for a special permit. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of walk through these two arguments. They're, they're identified by Roman numerals one and two in the correspondence we submitted dated dated March third. And so you can see with respect to the first of these, um, on, on page two, uh, we've acknowledged, as I said, we would, that this uh structure, this, this barn structure was apparently built concurrently with the uh single-family residence on the property, which was in or around seventeen ninety, so it's a very old structure. Uh, certainly predates the adoption of zoning in the city. Um, we've acknowledged that it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, therefore doesn't currently comply with dimensional standards, but nonetheless uh predates those standards. But then we've cited to this provision in section ninety two of the Newburyport zoning ordinance that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be extended or altered only upon the issuance of a special permit for nonconformities by the Board of Appeals. And we go on to provide an analysis of what an alteration is. Alteration is defined as any construction, reconstruction, or other similar action resulting in a change in the structural parts, height, number of stories, exit size, use, or location of a building, or other structure. So I don't think that there can be, and I'm not sure that even the applicant, even the landowner would uh contest that there has been, and because work is proceeding uh at risk on this, on this project. Um, I don't think anybody will contest that the work that is proceeding constitutes a quote-unquote alteration. Um, it appears, in fact, that most of the argument that we've advanced in my correspondence um, under Roman numeral one, uh, isn't contested. What is contested, and it seems to be the sole issue that is contested, is whether or not this particular structure is subject to what is often referred to as the second accept clause in the state statute, essentially providing for a less vigorous or onerous standard for single and two-family residential structures. And your ordinance uh mimics uh to some extent, nearly verbatim, the language of the state statute, and provides for instances where, with regard to single or two-family residential structures, there may not be a need for an applicant to come before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. So in that regard, and sort of moving for the moment off of my letter, I've looked at the staff report that was prepared uh by, by Ms. Sullivan, and maybe in conjunction with Mr. Port. And I uh appreciate the argument that that's being made. It, it appears that on page seven of the staff report, uh toward the top of the page, there's a reference to section nine B one, um, which uh, there, there's a quote here that, as I mentioned before, is more or less verbatim from the statute and uh, provides for the requirement that when there is reconstruction, extensional, extension, structural change to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, there is a need for a special permit. And then it has that language, except where alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a lawfully pre-existing single or two-family residential structure is exempt pursuant to section nine B three. So again, this is the second accept clause, as they, as they call it, because it's the second time that it, it's set is used in that, in that clause, you can read it right there for yourself on page seven. The second accept clause um exempts certain single and two-family residential structures from the requirement of a special permit. Now, uh, if you scroll down to the bottom of page nine, I was, um, I, I appreciated, but I, I'll be entirely candid, and I know that attorney Eichmann is present tonight, I think I, I, I heard, um, and certainly can speak for himself. I was a bit surprised at um, one component of the analysis that was performed uh by him as, as uh the, the city's legal counsel uh begins on the bottom of page seven, carries over onto, onto page eight. It's in a uh, sort of a, an italicized, it looks like it's a lighter blue font almost. Uh, the opinion here, he begins that opinion at the top of page eight by quoting what I've just quoted for you twice, that provision of chapter forty eight, section six, repeated in your zoning ordinance, that a zoning ordinance shall apply to a change or substantial extension. And then it goes on to say, except where the alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a single or two-family residential structure does not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. And it goes on, and there's, there's additional text there, and attorney Eichmann, much like I did, uh, then, then embarks upon sort of an analysis of the term alteration. And he underlines, in fact, in his version, which is not underlined, of course, in the statute, the critical language, to a single or two-family residential structure. Uh, what surprised me about the opinion is how the next paragraph starts, and I appreciate that I'm asking your board to, to do something um that I never like asking a board to do, which is to question the advice that your own counsel is giving to you, but, but that's my, my role representing the applicant for you. It says, applying uh, applying the law in question, it is first necessary to determine if the carriage house is a quote-unquote residential structure. And I would say, wait a moment. Um, I, I think it's more nuanced than that, and importantly so. And I, I'll go so far as to say, I don't think, I, I know, because the, the court, the courts have supported my position, I think. Um, the term that's in quotes here is residential structure. It's first necessary to determine if the carriage house is a quote-unquote residential structure. We've not argued in our, our materials that we submitted on behalf of the, the petitioner that the barn could never be considered a quote-unquote residential structure. But the scope of the statute, the scope of the ordinance, in fact, the very language that is underlined by attorney Eichmann in the preceding paragraph wasn't just residential structure. There was an important modifier there that's part of the very description. It says, single or two-family residential structure. And that's not just a distinction without a difference. It's critical. I mean, you, you And that's not just a distinction without a difference. It's critical. I mean, you, you couldn't argue, and I, I think that your board probably has experience with this. You couldn't argue as an applicant that this, this exemption, this, uh, this, this lesser standard, th- this flexibility that's provided with respect to, uh, modifications to single or two-family residential structures. You couldn't argue as an applicant before your board that, well, it applies to any residential structure. I, I could have a multi-family structure, a three-family structure, a six-unit condominium building, a twelve-unit apartment building. You couldn't make that argument because the language is clear. It applies to single or two-family residential structures. So the analysis, the first part of the analysis is not simply if the carriage house is a quote-unquote residential structure. It's whether the carriage house is a quote-unquote single or two-family residential structure. And I said before, that's not, um, a distinction without a difference and that it's nuanced. It, it very much is because there's no question that the Delisle home is a single-family residential structure. And if there were modifications proposed to that home under your zoning ordinance, those modifications could potentially be approved pursuant to a more lenient standard without necessarily requiring a special permit from the zoning board of appeals under this second accept clause that applies to single or two-family residential structures. But this is a detached barn. And Attorney Eichmann's analysis then begins to address accessory buildings or use and defines the term accessory and talks about customary and incidental. And I'm aware of all that language. Those are all terms of art. There were, there's case after case after case that deals with this terminology, customary and incidental as a definition for accessory use. These aren't necessarily non-conformity cases. These are just cases that distinguish between principal uses of a property and accessory uses and permissible accessory uses need to generally be customary and incidental. But that's not really the direction in which we ought to be going. We ought to be asking the important question. Is this barn a single or two-family residential structure? And I cited in jumping back now for a moment to page two of, of my supporting memo, uh, narrative with, with the application, uh, with, with the petition that we provided to the board. If you look at footnote one, I, I anticipated this might arise before it appeared in the staff memorandum. So I referenced, um, maybe not as extensively as I should have, knowing that, knowing that it would become such an issue. Um, in footnote one to my memo, I've cited to a couple of cases, in fact, cases, one case that went one way and one case that went the other, but both of which, which I think supports, uh, my client's position here that stand for the premise that a detached barn or garage or some accessory structure that is not part of the single or two-family residential structure is not part of the single or two-family residential structure, is not subject to the benefit of the second accept clause. Um, one of these cases, these are both, um, trial court cases, but relatively recent cases. They're both, in fact, land court cases, which tells you something too. Um, given the land court's specialty with these issues of non-conformity. So the, the Gerono case, Gerono versus Lynn's, it was a two thousand and ten case decided by Judge Sands. And I don't want to get too deep into the case law, but it's important to discuss these cases. Um, this was a case that, um, involved, in fact, an addition. So it wasn't, you know, quite, quite an apples to apples because it wasn't a reconstruction in the same footprint, but that doesn't matter for purposes of the analysis. It was an addition to a garage. And so the question that was put, one of the questions that was put before the board was whether or not this alteration to the garage qualified for the second accept clause. And I've got a quote here um, in, in my footnote, the addition is not an alteration of the single-family residential structure, but the alteration of an accessory building to a single-family structure. That's the, those are the words of, of Judge Sands. And in fact, I, I looked more closely at that case, uh, earlier today, um, just to refresh my recollection as to the facts. And, um, I, I get another quote here that, you know, the court said that, that, that the Willard case, which is a, a fairly, fairly notable case that, that addresses the interpretation of the second accept clause. Uh, it said, the, the Willard case focuses on the second accept clause of the first sentence of chapter forty-eight, section six, and thus primarily relates to single and two-family residential structures. And then turning back to this case, it said, the addition is not an alteration of the single-family residential structure, but is the alteration of an accessory building to a single-family structure. There is no evidence in the summary judgment record indicate that the garage or the addition has the capabilities for, quote, living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation, which is the definition of a dwelling. So essentially they were saying this is not a single or two-family dwelling. It's not a dwelling at all. It's an accessory garage. And I would argue to your board that that's no different than what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with an accessory barn. There's a proposal to renovate it to include, uh, traditional garage space as well as living space and what I believe is a powder room or, or a restroom or a bathroom. Um, but it, it's very much similar to the Land Court case that I just referenced. There, there's another case, and I, I used the term compare before it in my footnote, because it's also important to note that this went the other way, but it went the other way for a reason. That's the Godfrey case, uh, two thousand and seventeen case, somewhat more recent, also from the Land Court. Uh, now Chief Justice Piper decided that case. And in that instance, uh, this was a case out of Yarmouth. Uh, in that instance, the local bylaw gave greater protection. The local bylaw used the term uh, with respect to the second accept clause, which it mimicked in its zoning. It extended the protections of the second accept clause to, quote, single and two-family residential structures and their accessory structures. Your ordinance doesn't do that. New, new report's ordinance doesn't do that. So, um, in that case, the court said the local bylaw grades, uh, grants, excuse me, greater indulgence than the minimum required under chapter forty-eight, section six. That's the exact quote from the case. Your ordinance doesn't grant greater indulgence, at least in this context, it does in some other contexts. Um, under forty-eight, section six, paragraph one, second accept clause. So I think that that's sort of the crux of the argument as it relates to the comments that are made, uh, in the staff report. Um, my final point, just getting back to my memo and specifically the, the second topic is there, there is an independent basis for your board determining that a special permit was required. And that is that under section ninety-one, which again mirrors the language of the statute, uh, it also applies, it also requires a special permit for any alteration of a structure to provide for its use for substantially different purpose or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner or to a substantially greater extent. And that's, that language is, is, is pretty, pretty typical, um, in zoning ordinances in, in bylaws. But I say it's an independent basis because even if we don't focus on the actual structural changes and we focus instead on the use of the barn and whether the use of the barn and the change in the use of the barn has any effect in the analysis, it absolutely does. It does pursue into your ordinance. Your ordinance says that when you're altering the structure to provide for its use for a substantially different purpose or for even the same purpose, if it's in a substantially different manner or to a substantially greater extent, that again triggers the need for a special permit. And I, I don't think, I, I, I don't want to speak for the board, but I, I think that the board would be hard pressed to make an argument that converting a garage, I mean, you can see the current condition of it in the top corner of the plan that is on your screen at present, and converting that garage to, um, or that barn to a garage with a living area and a bathroom um, is a, and rebuilding substantial components of it. It is, I don't think there could be any argument that it's not a, i- i- if, if not providing its use for a substantially different purpose, certainly for the same purpose, I guess, in a substantially different manner or to a substantially greater extent. So that, it, it, as simply as I could possibly put it, and it took me the better part of ten or fifteen minutes to do it, and I apologize for that, but that really is the argument that, um, that the petitioners are advancing here. Not an argument that this is not a non-conforming structure, not an argument that it's not entitled to protections afforded non-conforming structures, um, simply that it hasn't followed the proper process. And that proper process is important as a matter of due process, and it's important for individuals like my clients, like the, the petitioners here. Um, because the petitioners have an opportunity to participate in a public process, in a public hearing as required by statute on a special permit for non-conformities. They didn't have that opportunity and shouldn't have had that opportunity in the context of a building permit. That's not what the law requires when all that's needed is a building permit. That's why these sorts of changes triggered the need for a special permit, triggered the requirement of a special, a special permit with a hearing, uh, with, with notice in advance to parties and interests within three hundred feet of the property, so that they have the opportunity to appear before local boards, express their concerns, seek appropriate conditions and mitigation. And they didn't, they didn't have that opportunity because from our perspective, the proper process wasn't followed. So that's our position. We, we appreciate the board, uh, digesting it and considering it and certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have at the appropriate time.
Okay, uh, thank you, Attorney Costa. Um, and, uh, certainly it is a, um, you know, it goes without saying, and I'll just mention this before we move on. It's, um, you know, i- it's fairly granular, very challenging legal, um, you know, legal analyses on, on all sides. So we greatly appreciate your efforts and certainly, uh, we weep in advance on behalf of all of we members of the ZBA asked to, you know, do thoughtful work in connection with this, but we will, uh, we will do our very and level best and, uh, and rely, uh, you know, rely duly upon the, uh, the sage and expert counsel of our city solicitor, which I think, uh, this is a perfect example of, of a meaningful use of. Um, before I proceed, since it's, since it was a very detailed, uh, presentation, I would like to, while it's still relevant in everyone's mind before we move on, um, I would like to, um, recognize our city solicitor, uh, for a moment, Attorney Eichmann, uh, with respect to much of what, um, the petitioners, uh, by Attorney Costa's presentation centered on, which was, um, uh, which was Copeland and Page, Attorney Eichmann's legal opinion for the board. Uh, Andy, could you, um, could you open Attorney Eichmann's, uh, mic? And Attorney Eichmann, can you hear me?
I can, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, and, uh, and thank you for, uh, your attendance this evening and your patience, uh, to the, um, to arrive at this application so that you could counsel us. So, um, having heard, uh, the petitioner, um, and Attorney Costa's analysis, specifically where he, uh, he has addressed the portions of the second accept clause, um, in your legal opinion citing in particular in his two footnotes, the Gerono case and the Godfrey case by contrast. Um, it's, I, I'd like to get your thoughts for the, uh, for the board uh, on, on just a, a quick response and any, um, additional, um, any additional guidance that you can, uh, you can provide. And then we're going to can, proceed with the, the format and process of of this, uh, this application as an appeal and, and get to, uh, get to the crux of it.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will do whatever attorney says they will do. I'll do my level best to be brief, and we'll probably violate that, but, um, we'll try our best. I agree completely with Attorney Costa that the issue before the board is simply put whether the, the so-called barn is correctly classified as a single or two-family residential structure under the Newbury Port zoning ordinance. I think that is the issue. Um, if it is not, um, then I do not disagree with the remainder of Attorney Costa's analysis. Uh, so I think the board can focus on that question. Um, I want to point out one thing though, um, in my original opinion, um, to, I believe it was to the zoning enforcement officer, the zoning administrator, Jennifer. Um, I did not say, um, that a single or two-family residential structure as a matter of law includes the barn. Uh, what I want to point out, and I'm sure the board is well aware, is single or two-family residential structure is not a defined term in Newbury Port zoning ordinance. That essentially means that the board is going to have to determine what the meaning of that term is and whether it incorporates a structure like the barn or whether it does not. And what I said in my opinion to the zoning administrator was that based upon my review of the Newbury Port zoning ordinance, it was reasonable for her to conclude that the barn does constitute a single or two-family residential structure. Because it does constitute one, therefore the correct section of, um, correct portion of section nine that applies, section nine dash B point three point A, which applies to so-called second accept clause, although it's in the ordinance, which simply says to the extent it does not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure, it's allowed as right. Uh, and that's essentially the outline of my opinion. So you know, just without going any further, and I think you have my opinion, you can see what it says, um. I looked at the totality of the bylaw noting that there was no definition of the term single or two-family residential structure, noted that, um, accessory, um, building or use, uh, has a definition that could very reasonably be interpreted to include buildings like garages that are accessory to single or two-family residences. But there is no particular definition of a single or two-family residential structure that requires that it contain dwelling units. Um, and from all of that concluded that it would certainly be reasonable to interpret this as including a garage. Accessory use, um, is as a general rule interpreted to mean that the accessory use or the accessory structure has the same partakes of the same use as the principal use. It is part of the principal use. And that therefore a structure that is accessory to a residential use would be considered part of that residential use, and therefore it's reasonable to consider it as, uh, accessory to the, to the structure. Uh, as a, excuse me, as an accessory structure. Um, I think that's most of what I want to say on this at this point. I'm sure there's going to be questions of this going forward. One, one further point, and this is a little more, I think, esoteric, uh, the case law cited by Attorney Costa, um, I don't believe that needs to be addressed here. Um, each of those cases for various reasons, I believe, is not on point. And in particular, I want to point out that I think this, uh, this issue can be decided strictly by looking within the four corners of the Newbury Port zoning ordinance. I don't believe that the board needs to look outside of that to case law interpreting other bylaws or ordinances or to forty-eight, section six. The city may provide in its zoning ordinances protection uh, in addition to the protections that are provided by forty-eight, section six. And what, uh, the, the petitioners arguing here is that, um, the owners of this property are not entitled to the protections of either forty-eight, section six with respect to uh, single or two-family residential structures or those of the Newbury Port zoning ordinance. So in my opinion, it's sufficient for the board to simply look at does the Newbury Port zoning ordinance consider this particular barn as it's proposed to be renovated, a single or two-family residential structure? And I think, um, the zoning administrator's conclusion um, devolves from that, um, from that analysis. So that's, that's what I would say to this point, and certainly take questions as they arise.
Thank you, Attorney Eichmann. Um, and, uh, we will certainly be circling back, uh, I'm sure with questions when we get to that segment. Um, okay, um, closing that portion of this, uh, public hearing, uh, we will go through the, um, the mechanics, uh, of formality and we will, um, open this up to, uh, public comment. Um, and again, we ask, uh, that in this format, even though this is an appeal, uh, it is still a public hearing and the public's participation is uh, invited and welcome and, and, um, certainly will help inform uh, further, uh, questions, discussions, and then subsequent deliberations by members of the ZBA. So to that end, you'll see a slide up, uh, for instructions for public comment. And just as in past hearings, both this evening and other evenings, uh, we ask you give, to give your name and your, um, uh, your address for our keeper of the records. Um, I will begin by recognizing, uh, I see the hand up of Attorney, uh, William Sheehan. Um, and with that, Andy, if you could unmute, uh, Attorney Sheehan's, uh, Mike and, uh, Attorney Sheehan, you have the, the floor. We do ask you kindly, um, just, uh, still give your, your name and, and, uh, and address and whom you represent if anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope I can be heard. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name is Bill Sheehan. I practice law at uh, eight Essex Center Drive in PBD, Massachusetts. And tonight is my privilege to represent Stephen Delisle and Bryn Stevens of one ninety-five High Street. At the risk of, of, um, the, I guess, the old adage that too many lawyers, uh, and especially with respect to interpreting statutes and bylaws, I just want to, uh, echo the comments of um, of the city solicitor, uh, and add maybe a couple of points. Uh, the first being that actually the Supreme Judicial Court has, uh, discussed this question of whether or not uh, a garage, yeah, should be considered as a single-family residential structure. And the answer is yes. Uh, in the Bjorkland case, which actually dealt with the second accept clause, although in a different context, uh, the Supreme Judicial Court, our highest court, uh, offered examples of what could be done, uh, under forty-eight, section six. And in addition to talking about minor changes to a house which was non-conforming, it also added as potential examples of what could be done, the addition of a one-story garage or the conversion of a one-story garage to a two-story garage. And a, and a one, and a single car garage to a two-car garage. So the issue is not especially new. I don't disagree certainly with Attorney Eichmann when he talks about the importance of the bylaw language, but there is certainly plenty of precedent from our highest court that recognizes that a garage can and might all due respect, I would suggest, should be included in the concept of a single-family residential structure. And once you come to that conclusion, I think everything else does follow that the zoning administrator properly interpreted your bylaw. And we would ask you to affirm the interpretation of the zoning administrator, all in accordance with the city solicitor's suggestion. The other thing I'd point out is this. Although it's not, again, especially on point, but important with respect to the notion of you, you heard Attorney Costa talk about a case that said that in, it was the second case he discussed, that in that case, the bylaw recognized a distinction between principal structures and accessory structures. And in fact, yours does as well. When you take a look at nine B three, which talks about this exemption that we're talking about, you'll see a general exemption under A and then a C, single two-family structure, a single-family exemption. And you'll see that there's a distinction in the language of sub-paragraph A that talks about single and two-family residential structures generally. And when you take a look at part C under paragraph three, you'll see that there's, that deals specifically with and deals with only a principal structure. So you have the more general reference to single and two-family residential structures under A, which is where we say our exemption comes from in distinction to the part, language of part C, which talks about a principal structure. So that adds further support to the proposition that your bylaw, as well as in my view, the statute forty eight, six, as interpreted by the Bjorkland case, that those things all support the proposition, as Attorney Eichmann has suggested, that the building that we're talking about that's being relocated is in fact to be considered as a single-family residential structure. We are entitled to the exemption from what would otherwise be a requirement of a non-conformity special permit. The use, by the way, remains the same. You have a residential use now. You're going to have a residential use later. And in fact, when you take a step back and you look at what we're doing here, all that's happening is this structure is being moved a little farther away from one ninety three. And basically being used again, just as it has been for residential use a little bit differently, but nothing that's going to create a new non-conformity or an increase in any non-conformity. Therefore, I would urge this board to affirm the decision and the interpretation of the zoning administrator and deny this appeal. And I thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Sheehan. Recognizing a hand, a hand that's raised, I see Mr. Thomas Colterjohn. Andy, if you could go ahead and unmute Mr. Colterjohn's mic. Mr. Colterjohn, if you hear us, you have the floor, sir.
Tom, you'll need to unmute on your end as well.
Mr. Colterjohn, can you hear us?
Chair, this is Andy. I know that I think Tom had a couple of meetings recently. He said some audio issues. I'm not sure if that's the issue right now, but Tom, if you're with us, if you could indicate verbally.
All right. Well, we will give Mr. Colterjohn a moment to try to sort out the audio issue. And Mr. Colterjohn, if you could hear me, we, I, I will, if you want to just let us know, once, you know, once you get back online, we'll certainly.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, sir. Great.
Terrific. Thank you.
You, you have.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Colterjohn, you, you, we can hear you now and you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Tom Colterjohn, sixty-four Federal Street, co-president of the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. The trust strongly believes that this appeal should be denied. The owners of one ninety-five High Street are doing a great service to Newbury Port by restoring their wonderful barn slash carriage house. Is one of the earliest and best remaining examples of Newbury Port's fast disappearing barns. They have hired the best firm possible to do the work. And I know that if they are permitted to proceed, Newbury Port will benefit. And an outstanding example of our early architecture will be preserved. Please turn down this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colterjohn. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application? And Attorney Sheehan, I see your hand still up and I want to make sure you, you're not asking to be recognized again, or if not, if you could just let me know if your hand is still up, I'll recognize you again. If not, we'll move on.
No, I failed to lower it. I'll lower it now.
Great. Thank you, sir. Seeing no other hands, I will, going once, going twice. And Mr. Colterjohn, I see your hand still up. Are, is that just inadvertent? There we go. Okay. See, no, see, thank you, sir. Seeing no further hands, I will close this portion of the public hearing and we will go to questions from the board. And again, as we've heard members of the ZBA, you know, in narrowing the issues, we have the benefit of, of our city solicitor, Attorney Eichmann here. So feel free to direct any questions to either the applicant through Attorney Costa or through Attorney Eichmann, or, you know, any of the, any of the above, starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wow, where do I start? I'm not a lawyer by trade. You should probably have noticed if you've been in a lot of these meetings. So this really seems like a complicated issue. It really comes down to a question maybe for our city solicitor where and it was already referenced by Attorney Costa to, on the applying the law in question, the first and from page eight of the report that we get. And I'm sorry for stumbling through this, but I had some thoughts and now they've all gone out because of different things that are coming in my head. I wondered if our city solicitor could maybe just, again, explain the logic in the opinion that the Newbury Port zoning ordinance allows a carriage house can reasonably be called a residential structure.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
By all, by all means, Attorney Eichmann.
Yes, thank you. It's, again, it's not a precise formula here by any means. It's requires looking at the, the by, the ordinance as a whole and trying to determine what the correct meaning of that term is, single and two-family residential structure within, within the particular section that we're looking at. And again, there is no definition. So it is left to the discretion in the first instance of the zoning administrator on appeal to this board to determine the meaning. And what I looked at, and as you heard Attorney Sheehan, also looking at specific terms of the bylaw to try to make an argument as to why it would be reasonable to classify the barn as a single and two-family residential structure. I did note that Attorney Sheehan pointed out a use of the word principal that I had not noted. I think it's, it is significant. It does suggest that their, a single and two-family residential structure encompasses both principal and accessory structures. And that's actually quite important. Otherwise, as, you know, I said in the opinion, I looked at the definition of accessory building or use. In my opinion, that would include a structure like the barn, provided that the use is accessory to the residential use. I don't think there were any other definitions that I could look at. There is no definition of residential structure and much less single or two-family. And so from that and from basically the general knowledge of how accessory uses and structures are treated under zoning laws. And that is, since, as I said before, that a, a structure that is used accessory to a principal use is considered part of that principal use. And so therefore it would not be unreasonable to say that when you're talking about a single or two-family residential structure, you are talking about every structure that is used as accessory or as part of the single or two-family residential use. And from that, I reached the conclusion that the zoning, the zoning administrator could reasonably make that interpretation. I did, in a subsequent response, indicate to her that it would be possible to have a narrower interpretation. A narrower interpretation would be, as Attorney Costa pointed out, that single or two-family residential use means or a structure means that someone has to live in the structure. It has to be a residence. I did not see any direct support for that in the zoning ordinance. So while I think that's a possible interpretation, I don't think, again, that there's any particular argument to support that other than, as Attorney Costa pointed out, well, it says residential. Therefore, it means somebody has to reside in it. I don't see that that conclusion necessarily has to be drawn. I think that's the best I can explain it based on what you have.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton. Yeah, um, you know, in this case, the, the attorney bringing forward the appeal said that the big issue was the second exception and this thing about is this an accessory? Does this extract, is the barn essentially part of the single family? And I think that's been really well addressed by the city solicitor. I thank you. You've made a murky subject clearer for me than when we started. The other thing that the person bringing the appeal brought up was this question about, is there, you know, a, a big change of use here? Because they put in a powder room and they're going to be using the upstairs for some additional living area. And, you know, I'd like to just ask about that because I think the first issue in my mind was pretty well put to bed, but the second question, you know, it's not like we haven't seen these before. We've, we've seen situations where people are, you know, have a home office on their second floor of a garage, for example, which doesn't seem to be an issue unless they're expanding the building or something, and then, then we get involved. So I guess my question is to Attorney Eichmann, the fact that they're putting in a powder room and going to be using the upstairs for some living space, is that a problem?
Thank you, Attorney.
Again, yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. That is certainly something that the board can and perhaps should be looking at. What we've been discussing to this point is whether this particular barn, as it's proposed to be renovated or reconstructed, is in fact a single or two-family residential structure. And that leads to the question of will the use as proposed fit within the category of accessory to the principal, single or two-family residence on the property? That is a judgment question based on knowledge of local conditions for the board to determine. And in the first instance, again, for the zoning administrator who determined it was. But it's certainly something the board could look at. It's a discretionary determination for the board to make, again, based on their knowledge of what is accessory in Newbury Port and particularly in this area.
I guess a follow-up question I would have then is in the past, I, just looking at what we've been ruling on and things, we have felt that, you know, a second residence with a kitchen and everything is, is not okay. But it is okay to just have some additional living area if it's just accessory, if you will, to the, to the, to the house. Is, is that within our purview to have that as a valid interpretation?
Again, Mr. Chair, through you, I, I think it is the one thing I would caution is that with every accessory use, sometimes ordinances single out and treat specifically certain accessory uses. I believe that it's home occupation is treated separately in the Newbury Port zoning ordinance. And that would take precedence over a sort of general determination by the board as to whether it's consistent with what they know of accessory use. But if there is no, you know, specific treatment of that use, then I think, yeah, I think it would be well, well within the board's discretion to say, we think that is accessory to residential use.
Okay. Well, thank you. You've addressed both of the issues that were raised, at least in my mind. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Eichmann, and thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Channen.
Yeah, I guess, as, as I looked at this, I thought Attorney Costa made two compelling arguments. I'm really struggling with every accessory building is afforded these protections. I mean, when we look around this city, we've got pool bars, flower houses, lean-tos, dog houses, pool houses, sheds. I'm really struggling to call them part of a single or a two-family residence. It just seems to me if we really intended the ordinance to mean that, it would have been a little bit more structured, identifying it as such. And also I do think there is a change in use of this barn. Had there not been a bathroom and living space in it, and it was just storage, I, I would agree that there is not a change of use. But I, I think the attorney clause has made two compelling arguments. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, this is a we have to do some careful parsing of all the provisions of the zoning ordinance, as well as guidance from the, our friends in the courts. And I appreciate both Mr. Costa's and Mr. Sheehan's able counsel on the, with respect to their clients' positions on this. I want to address the last point regarding the use. If, if it is accepted that a single or two-family residential structure would include the barn, then the change of, then a, a purported change of use doesn't seem to be. Well, it doesn't change the use of that system because it talks about non-conforming nature of said structure. And the non-conforming nature of this structure is not its use, if it's, if it is deemed to be a two-family or single or two-family residential structure. So we're, we really start to get into some arcane language here and how to interpret it all. I guess at the end of the day, I will be guided by our solicitor's advice on this. I'm not in a position to second guess his perspective on this. He's much more conversant with the ordinance than I am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I will kind of share my, my question as well. And I'll apologize in advance as, as I am yet, yet another another attorney in the room, although I, I suspect it's more of a detriment than, than, than an advantage. But having said that, I've listened carefully to Attorney Costa's argument and read carefully his analysis and certainly that of our city solicitor as well and, and still, and left somewhat, you know, perplexed. And in, in, I think it all, for me, turns on the, not necessarily what our zoning ordinance says, but what it's silent on. And I think, you know, in particular, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly, I certainly appreciate the footnote references from Attorney Costa citing both Guarano and Godfrey as a, as an alternative, though neither one are directly on point. You know, they, they certainly turn on this very complicated, you know, analysis and conclusion of the second exception, though, in, you know, in unrelated application than, than we have. So my question, I suppose, is for, is for, I've got two questions and I'll, Attorney Costa, my first is to you. So allow me to ask you, why, why can't the ZBA adopt the second exception analysis? the second exception analysis of a more restrictive treatment, greater indulgence, as you know, as, as defined by by Judge Piper in the land court? Then is provided otherwise, uh, under forty A, section six, or our own bylaws, um, you know, is, is, I guess my question to sum it up, is the silence our ordinance? You know, is, is our ordinance is silenced on that? Does it doom us to have to adhere to, you know, to the absence of it? Or may, or, or do you feel as though our ZBA cannot depart from what our ordinance does not say? Is that, is that too cumbersome a posed question, I think? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I, I do, Mr. Chairman, so I'll, I'll try to be succinct in, in an answer, but, um, but, but the question is a complicated one. So, um, I, I think that, so I heard all that Attorney Eichmann had to say, and I heard what Attorney Sheen had to say. And as, as a, as a preliminary matter, I have great respect for both attorneys. So I appreciate their interpretations and I appreciate that, you know, different legal, differing legal minds differ with respect to interpretation of the same clause or provision in an ordinance or a bylaw. One thing that Attorney Eichmann said to you that I agree with entirely is with respect to interpretations of, of, uh, ordinance provisions, bylaw provisions. There, you know, on the one hand is a certain degree of deference that's entitled to municipalities and interpreting those. I would agree that generally I refer, when I, when I counsel municipal clients, I refer to the four corners of the ordinance. If there's a term, term that's used within a municipal ordinance or a bylaw, and that term is defined within that municipal ordinance or bylaw, then that definition controls. But obviously, very often when I get those calls, it's not because the answer's simple. If the definition was in the definition section, I probably wouldn't have gotten the call to begin with. It's because the term's not defined. And so you then engage in this analysis, well, do you refer to the principles of statutory construction? How do you determine these phrases? How do you determine their meaning? How do you determine their application? Attorney Eichmann said that chapter forty A, section six, paragraph one, this concept of non-conformities. It is, it's often referred to in the case law as providing a floor and not a ceiling of protection. And what that really means is that municipalities are free to adopt more generous protections. And many municipalities, including some I represent, have adopted in their ordinances and bylaws, more forgiving protections afforded to non-conformities. And you and, and Newburyport, um, and not you specifically, zoning board of appeals members, the city council has adopted an ordinance that in some instances provides more forgiving protection. You're not obligated to, uh, provide some of the categories of protection that you provide to single and two-family residential structures and allow them to bypass a special permit process, go to the building official and get a, a building permit, but you do that. The issue here is, if you look at the cases that I cited to in my footnote, and I appreciate again Attorney Eichmann saying that, you know, he doesn't view these as being directly on point. Well, no case, certainly no trial court case is going to be directly on point because they all deal with the facts that are before them. Unless I could find a case that happened to deal with the Newburyport zoning ordinance, it wouldn't be entirely on point. It's going to deal with the ordinance or bylaw in whatever community it was being dealt with in that case. Uh, but we look to these cases for guidance because they answer in part the question you asked and some of the other questions that have floated tonight. Number one, they suggest that when you want to provide this additional degree of protection, if you want to adopt a a, a, a more generous degree of protection, Attorney Eichmann said, would it be possible to have a narrow interpretation? Sure. But that doesn't oblige you to. Well, I would agree with that, except that if you want to provide greater protection than what the plain language states, you've got to do that in the way that they did in Yarmouth, in the Godfrey case. The Yarmouth ordinance, or bylaw, I should say, was very specific. It cited to single and two-family residential structures, quote, and their accessory structures. So I, I would have to concede in that case that it's plain in the zoning bylaw that the protections apply to accessory structures. The legislative body, town meeting in that case, city council, in the case of the city of Newburyport, would have the ability to adopt those greater protections. You've not done that in Newburyport. And so you then ask the question, well, can, can we do it as a zoning board? I think that was your specific question, Mr. Chairman. Can we do it as a zoning board? And I would say that it's not your role as a zoning board to do that. Yes, you've got a degree of deference with respect to interpretations. But I think you've got to look to the terminology, not just in the context of the ordinance, but where the ordinance language mimics, almost verbatim, the language of the state statute. I do think you have to look to case law and say, well, have the courts gotten to this? Because, yeah, we can interpret it however the heck we want in the city of Newburyport. But is that consistent if the language mirrors the language of the state statute in a higher, a higher power? The courts in Massachusetts have spoken to this and they've determined how that, that phrasing ought to be interpreted. Shouldn't we be interpreting it in a consistent manner? And again, you look at the Guarano case and they interpreted the language in that instance in a, in a zoning bylaw that, you know, didn't, didn't have didn't have a provision like they did in Yarmouth in the Godfrey case that provided extended protection to accessory structures. And so the court said, it doesn't apply to accessory structures. The statute, which is the same language that's in your ordinance, says single and two families. So that was a, a long-winded answer to your question, but that's my position.
No, I greatly appreciate that, Attorney Costa. So quick follow-on question then, isn't it fair to say, I mean, isn't it true that it is? It is, um, within the purview of the zoning board as an appellate board, setting no precedent, we're bound by no repetition of, of action, but rather take every single case, case by case, tailored upon the facts before us. Isn't it fair to say that it is, even if not strictly defined, it's still within the discretionary powers of this board to, to interpret, even in the absence of the language and the definition within the four corners of our ordinance, isn't it still within our purview to make interpretation where we find it silent? Or is it your position that you, you feel that it's a departure from our, from our, um, our permissible purview to do that?
No, I think that's what I'm asking you to do. I mean, I think that's part of the, the adjudicatory process here under chapter forty eight, section eight, section fifteen, bringing this appeal to your board. That, that's why that exhaustion of administrative remedies procedure exists, to give your board the first bite at the apple, the first opportunity to interpret. So I'm not going to tell you, you don't have the right to interpret. That's what I'm asking you to do. I, what I'm stating is that I think that in making that interpretation, you have to be guided by, you ought to be guided by, I'm not going to tell you what you have to do. You ought to be guided by certainly the advice that you're, you're getting from counsel, um, from your counsel. But you, but, but your counsel, as I heard Attorney Eichmann, wasn't giving you a definitive answer. He was sort of stating, um, and rightfully so, that, um, you know, could you interpret it? Could he defend you interpreting it the way that it's been interpreted by your zoning administrator, the way that you're being asked by Attorney Sheen to defend it? He, he could support that, but he's not telling you definitively that's the only interpretation. That's your decision to make. And then, of course, if a party is agreed, whether it's my client or if you rule in my favor, it's Attorney Sheen's client, there's an opportunity then to challenge that in a court, which will then look to a competing case law and say, you know, how does, how, how, how does this, how ought this be interpreted? Was the Newburyport ZBA correct in, in making the decision that it did?
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, Attorney Costa. Um, Attorney Eichmann, my, my second question is, um, same question to you. But, um, may I ask you to, to sort of, uh, address for our board, or perhaps just for me? Can our ZBA adopt the extended protections akin to the Godfrey case, even though it's not on point under the second exception clause and, you know, provide, as that court had described, greater indulgence than the minimum required under forty eight, section six? May our, i- is it within our purview in, in your, in your guidance that, uh, that we could do that if the board was so inclined?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The short answer to that question is yes. I think that's the, basically the, the conclusion of my opinions to the board on this is that the bylaw, excuse me, the ordinance does contain sufficient latitude for the board to reach that conclusion. I disagree, um, with Attorney Costa that the case law in any way directs, and he didn't say this exactly, but I don't think that the case law that he cites requires or, um, in any way acts as precedent that the board has to view as, as as, uh, compelling it to act in any particular way here. I agree that, um, if this gets before a court, the similarities are perhaps even the as Attorney Costa points out, how it mimics forty eight, section six, and then the court would look to forty eight, six and say, well, that's how we interpret it here. Therefore, if the language is the same, then isn't that the correct interpretation in Newburyport? I think that argument is a little simple, frankly. Again, you have to look at the entire ordinance. Those that, those terms, single and two-family residential structure are common terms. They're not defined in the state zoning act anymore than they're defined in the Newburyport zoning ordinance. And in fact, I'm not aware of a case directly on point as to what those terms mean when they're used in forty eight, section six in this particular context. So I think there's a fair bit of latitude here. And as again, I said, in my opinion, I think there's sufficient latitude within your ordinance to interpret those terms as a zoning administrator did.
All right. Um, thank you, Attorney Eichmann. And, um, you know, just sort of a last dovetail. Attorney Sheen, having heard and certainly with respect and deference to, uh, your comments, uh, I want to just circle back and, and touch upon you, sir, with respect to the legal arguments that you heard in response to my question from, uh, attorney, from, from Attorney Costa and then from our city solicitor, Attorney Eichmann. Is there anything further that you wish to add? Andy, if you can go ahead and unmute Attorney Sheen's mic as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chempetti. The, the only thing I want to just reiterate is that I, I would suggest that your, your bylaw, your ordinance does have that language which is more beneficial, if you will, than forty A, section six. Uh, as I talked about the distinction between under three A, single and two-family residential structures, which I would suggest includes accessory structures because when you compare it to language in paragraph C, there, that language pertains only to principal structures. So the, the drafters of this ordinance did understand the distinction between principal and what, what I'll call more general structures and did so, uh, in your ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Shan. Um, okay, so I, I have no further questions and I'm just going to do one more pass among board members. Uh, are there any additional questions, uh, by members of the ZBA before we, we close that portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations? Hearing no, hearing no further questions, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and move into deliberations. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chempetti. I guess to me, it's, it, and I prefer to look at this too black and white. And first of all, I appreciate all the opinions of all the lawyers in the room, even including you, Rob. Um, no, I the expertise and, um, the, the respect and, and the approach is, is helpful. But also to a layperson, it can be overwhelming. So I guess to me, it's boiled down to, um, if one accepts that the barn is a single or two-family structure and that it can be seen according to Newburyport zoning ordinance as an accessory, accessory structure. And then in principle, that comes down to, you know, maybe the use of it. And if, if the use is going to be more of a a family room, I don't know if this would be a big discussion if there was ping pong table going up there and that was it, but because there's a little bathroom involved, maybe caught the eye of some. But as a layperson, if it becomes a, a, a more usable living space by the family as an accessory structure, it's more of a residential structure. Anyway, so I, I guess it's a convoluted way of saying I'm, I'm leaning heavily on the interpretation from, from our our counsel, um, as, as it respects, with respect to how to interpret uh, the new report, zoning ordinance and, and what our charge is when we come across, uh, questions of, of this nature. So I'll leave it at that for now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I guess this is all about whether, um, the city of Newburyport originally, uh, interpreted the zoning correctly, or the, um, you know, when the building permit was approved and whether it was all done correctly. And, uh, that's being appealed, but I, now that I've learned a lot about all this stuff and I appreciate all the input. You know, I, I, I think what the city did was within its, uh, within the law, within its correct, the way it can interpret things. And so I, I found particularly the city solicitor's comments to be very compelling. And, uh, so I, I'm not in favor of the appeal. Thank you.
All right. Um, and, uh, Mr. Chenin.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, in, interesting discussions. I, I guess on point with, with one of the comments made by the city solicitor. The argument can be made that, uh, we could interpret the ordinance as such. But I, I, I have to struggle with it and, uh, therefore I, I guess I, I would, uh, vote to approve the appeal. Uh, I'm, I'm just having a hard time trying to understand how all these accessory buildings are considered, uh, part of a residential structure. Uh, but that, that, that's where I'm coming from.
Um, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chenin and Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, well, I think we've all honed in on the issue. I mean, reduced to its essentials, the question really, or question really is how does this zoning board of appeals define the term single or two-family residential structure? And to put a gloss on that, can the zoning board, should the zoning board define it to include accessory structures? The term isn't defined, so how do we figure out what the, uh, drafters meant? I guess we look at the totality of the ordinance itself. We look at, uh, the purposes, underlying purposes of the, of the zoning ordinance. We look at guidance from courts and and we take all that into account and we try to come up with a definition which is consistent with those directives. Uh, I was particularly, uh, taken with Mr. Shan's, uh, reference to sections three A versus section three C, which I would agree suggests to me that the drafters of the ordinance clearly understood the distinction here that we're talking about. And, uh, moreover, I think to define the term for this purpose of single or two-family residential structure, to include accessory structures is more consistent with the purposes, uh, of the zoning, uh, zoning ordinance. So for those reasons, I am inclined to support the, uh, city solicitor's opinion and deny this appeal.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, and, um, I, I want to say I have a great deal of respect and appreciate all of the great, um, careful work that was brought to bear by, uh, not only Attorney Costa on behalf of the petitioner, uh, but also our city solicitor, on behalf of, uh, we, the board, the zoning board of appeals, uh, as well as the city and, uh, and of course, the, uh, the commentary of Attorney Sheen, uh, on behalf of his client. It is a really cumbersome, um, mire for any, for to be asked of any volunteer board, especially volunteer board, who by design is intended to not be made up of exclusively attorneys, thank God, um, and have, you know, regular, fair-minded thinking folks of all backgrounds and, and expertise, you know, bringing together some alchemy of a hopeful, you know, best thoughtful result. And so in this instance, I, you know, I'm, I'm given being a, you know, an attorney. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm kind of drawn into the legal, you know, granular arguments that are being raised and trying to find my way through it as well with the great, the same challenges as others, I'm sure. But for me, it, it really just boils down to, you know, um, for me, the question of, of you know, whether the carriage house i- is a residential structure, you know, and, uh, and I, um, I feel that it can be and, and probably should be defined as a residential structure as we, as our zoning ordinance defines it. It is a customary and incidental accessory use of, of a principal residential use and structure. And, and that is not at all novel, you know, in our treatment in the past, though our treatment in the past shouldn't be what governs us in the present. It, it's just a sort of a footnote that, that we, you know, it's, it's not something new that we would treat it in this way. It's as an accessory, um, an accessory building, uh, or use to a, to a principal structure. It is customary, in my opinion, that garages and barns, just as is defined in our solicitor's opinion to us, you know, are, are typically and reasonably classified as residential structures under that definition. And, and if we accept, if I accept that, I'm then moved, I, I brought to the second question, which is whether the proposed reconstruction of this barn, the preservation, restoration and reconstruction increases the non-conformity under forty eight, section. increases the nonconformity under forty eight, section six, uh, or adds a new nonconformity. And I know that there is a proposal for the relocation of windows and doors. Uh, and we have, you know, quite a bit of analysis by Attorney Eichman on that point as well. And I agree with his conclusion. Uh, and respectfully, you know, I have to disagree with the, uh, you know, with the very highly respected uh, opinion and legal conclusions of, um, of the petitioner's attorney, Attorney Costa. Um, though I, I credit him for, you know, the analysis, I just, I just come to a different conclusion. I, I find that, um, I believe that it's appropriate that under the second except clause, you know, we, we as a board can, it's within our purview and, and I, I was able to get that sort of reinforcement from in the opinion of ours, of Attorney Eichman, that it is as I suspected it was, that it, that it is in his opinion as well, uh, within our purview to depart from, uh, from the, the strict four corners of, of our zoning ordinance. Um, and, uh, and make interpretation and find, you know, and, and this interpretation in his opinion was reasonable um, and derivative. And, and I, I agree with that as well. So I, I too feel I can support the, um, you know, the, um, the conclusion that, you know, that, uh, uh, to, to reject the appeal, uh, but I, um, I do want to say I appreciate everyone's work and analysis and I find that that's where I land as well. Any further deliberations by members of the ZBA before we close that portion of the public hearing? Okay. Um, seeing no further, uh, deliberations or comments from ZBA, we're going to, uh, close that portion of the public hearing and move to uh, a, a motion. And again, under Robert's rules of order, uh, we will, um, I will ask a member of the ZBA to, uh, to volley a motion to grant, to approve the appeal. We'll, we'll frame it in the affirmative. And, uh, then we will see, um, how that shakes out by both. Uh, with that, do we have a motion?
Oh, yes, uh, Mr. Moore here. I, uh, make a motion to approve the appeal of the building inspector's issuance of building permit for a barn restoration project at one ninety five High Street is twenty twenty one dash fourteen.
Okay. Motion is made. Do we have a second?
Uh, Shagman, second.
Okay. Motion, uh, is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Chan, Mr. Chen to approve the appeal on twenty one, twenty dash, uh, twenty twenty one dash fourteen. The appeal of the building inspector's issuance of a building permit for alteration and reconstruction of a preexisting nonconforming structure for a different use at one ninety five High Street, calling the roll, uh, Mr. Moore.
No.
Uh, Mr. Swanton.
No.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
No.
And, uh, Rob Champetti, I vote no, uh, as well, uh, which is four in the affirmative. Um, I'm sorry, four in the negative, one in the affirmative. The, um, motion, uh, fails. And, uh, that, uh, motion, that, that appeal is, um, is denied. I want to say, um, thank you, Attorney Costa. Thank you, Attorney Eichman, uh, as well as Attorney Sheen and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Coulter John, uh, for, uh, your comments and your thought, your, your thoughtful presentation, your comments and your participation. Um, so with that, we will close that, uh, public hearing and move to the final portion of our meeting this evening, which is the business meeting. Uh, we have before us the minutes prepared by Ms. Joy for the meeting of March twenty third, twenty twenty one. Uh, do we have any comments from members of the ZBA? Um, any revisions? And in the absence of that, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I have one revision. This is Ken Swanton. Under the Curzon Road, um, hearing, it says Mr. Delisle recused himself. Then it goes on to say, Mr. Delisle seconded the motion in the meeting. I mean, he, he couldn't have done both. I think somebody else recused themselves on that one. I
Yeah, I, I, the point I was going to bring up, I, I had to recuse myself. I'm going to butter. So I did not vote on that. I was recused.
Okay. So that's the change, change Mr. Delisle to Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Um, and Andy, if we could also, uh, if we could demote Mr. Delisle from the audience and promote him back to the panel. Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Um, all right. Any other, uh, comments, questions or, uh, changes, revisions to the minutes?
I, I will, we approve the minutes as amended. Ken Swanton.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Great. Motion is made to approve by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Moore. To approve the minute, the, uh, the meeting minutes of three twenty three, twenty one. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
He's still muted. You're muted.
Yeah.
Mr. I will, we'll come, we'll come back to Mr. Delisle. Uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. And Mr. Delisle.
Still hurting for Mr. Motion.
This is loud. Tap twice if you can hear us. Okay. Um, well, we, um, the, uh, we have a majority of the motion carries, uh, the, um, eyes have it in the motion carries and the minutes are approved. Um, and, uh, okay. So moving on, we have a, uh, section B of our business meeting correspondence, the annual forty B report from CHAPA. Um, Andy, do you want to, uh, to, uh, Andy or Caitlin, do you want to update us on, on that? Or, um, or, or, uh, Jen, I see Jennifer Blanchay also, uh, in the panel. Do you want to speak on that?
I think Caitlin can probably best speak to the, uh, forty B report. It's, uh, in the general, just as the, uh, CHAPA tries to monitor affordable units in each community. And, um, you know, this is something that D H D does as well. Um, forty B is a, uh, is an unusual statute. I, it really hasn't been used in my time working for the city, um, here, but, um, uh, I think as Chair Chimpetti knows, uh, this is the type of state statute that allows developers to come in for permitting, a special permitting process if they designate enough units as affordable. So, uh, CHAPA, um, uh, is an entity that does a fair amount of work trying to advocate for affordable housing, monitor affordable housing and so forth. And, uh, the report, which it kind of speaks for itself is, uh, or the communication is, um, was in your packet.
Okay. Um, and I, I can say that, um, when I first joined the board in, uh, in oh two, um, one of the first things I was thrown into, thrown to the wolves into was a forty B, um, uh, comprehensive permit on the, uh, by, uh, Minco, Lumen Kuchi and his company, um, on the construction of the, um, the residential units behind Dunkin' Donuts on Story Avenue. And, and that process, uh, was, it took several months to complete. And under forty B, it's a comprehensive, uh, consolidated permitting process whereby essentially an applicant can, i- if a community has, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, and Caitlin, correct me if I'm wrong, if the community under forty B uh, is, uh, is demonstrated to have less than, uh, ten percent affordable housing stock within the community, then, uh, they are compelled to, to, uh, promote, to promulgate this comprehensive uh, permitting process that consolidates all the permitting decision making, uh, under one, um, board, which is the zoning board of appeals. So no concom, no historic commission, no planning board, uh, everything comes and is dealt with by ZBA. And, um, the, uh, the twist of it is that the, the applicant, uh, may choose to appeal um, and, and pull out from the local, uh, com- comprehensive permitting process and, uh, take their forty B application to the state. Uh, and, um, and in doing so, if they go to Boston for that, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're treated by, by, you know, by statewide standards, uh, versus a sort of a hyper local approach and attention to detail. So it's, so, so it's a shield and a sword and often, you know, threatened, um, in use and often used. Um, uh, because it's, it's appropriate. But it is important for us to know where we stand in our, in our affordable housing stock. And that's an important, I think, stock of housing for our community, um, and creates balance. Andy, do we know, or Caitlin, do we know what CHAPA has, uh, concluded where we stand on a percentage wise in terms of affordable housing?
Uh, well, so the official numbers are through D H D and we're really, uh, around the sevens. We've, we've, uh, not been able to get to ten. Uh, and then in some ways, because of the, uh, some of the conversions, we've actually gone down a bit, uh, in our percentage uh, in the recent years. So, uh, you know, it proves us to try to create things like the, um, the one boss away development that has twenty five percent of the units that are affordable. Um, but, um, you know, we, we have been below ten percent for, for quite a while, um, around the sevens.
Okay. That's what I thought. That's about what it was in oh two. And, uh, okay, great. Uh, was there anything else that we should know about?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Um, any other updates, uh, from our planning chair? I can say there's no, no, I have no, I have no further updates as the chair. Uh, but any other updates from our planning director?
Uh, no, we, uh, we had hoped to, Caitlin and Jennifer and I have a brief discussion with the board and it's probably a little bit late to do it this evening. Um, but, uh, long story short, we, we had thought that, um, as the board talks about architectural plans for applications uh, and considers the type of conditions that you'd want to place on a, um, a project. Um, applicants will give you, uh, and just to be brief with this for your consideration prior to, you know, next meeting, uh, we could have a discussion at it. Just think about the types of plans that you get from applicants, this just being an example. Um, and you'll notice on the plans that the architects will sometimes call out materials, for instance. Um, and, um, you know, we, we like to have plans that are very clear, uh, very clearly drawn. We've been working with Jennifer. Um, in the time that she's been here as zoning administrator to make sure that applicants give plans that are clear, uh, and don't leave anything ambiguous. Um, but there are some times where flexibility might be appropriate to allow folks, uh, for us to change the type of signing, for instance. So the question was raised, uh, that perhaps the board wants to consider as you look at applications, whether or not it makes sense to um, reference these details, uh, where they're important, uh, or, or clarify where they're exempted or they can be allowed to have modifications. Um, uh, you know, in terms of elevations, obviously these speak to where Windows goes and things like that, but there are some finer grain details where, uh, applicants might benefit from some flexibility. Uh, it may not have a substantive impact on the board's decision. Um, but you may want to consider where that threshold falls because obviously each project is different. Uh, the sensitivity to details or architectural, um, elements is, it can vary. But, uh, the point we just wanted to make was think about it with these applications that, um, you know, sometimes a level of detail might be very important to uh, get it a fine grain on the plans or in the written decision. And some, some cases you might want to leave it more flexible for them, um, you know, in the appropriate instances. So that's it.
Okay. Very good. Um, thank you very much. Um, seeing, having nothing further on our agenda this evening, um, I, uh, will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Ken Swanton.
Seconded, Mark Moore.
Made, uh, made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Moore on the motion to adjourn. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle. Um, still, that's okay. Uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Um, thank you, uh, Ms. Joy for note taking and members of the board, Andy, Caitlin, uh, I appreciate everything. We appreciate everything you guys, uh, do. And, uh, you guys all have a great evening.